Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting of March 29th. This evening, our principal focus is going to be on budget, as well as some of the accompanying warrant articles. We'll have one session after an initial discussion of a variety of topics of administrative with the Finance Committee, with a focus on the budget. But we're also, again, as I say, talking about the warrant. And one of the first items will be hearing the HRA, Hatfield Redevelopment Authority, talk about two of their proposed articles for town meeting. Before we begin, however, is anyone here for public forum? Yes, ma'am. Oh, okay.
I'm Carrie Flaherty from the Hatfield Board of Health, and we're here tonight just to give a general introduction of our new health agent that we hired about three months ago. This was the first time that we could all get together with the board. So this is Charlie Knickie. He's got 15 years of town, local Board of Health involvement, and then also, he just retired last June in 2015 from the Department of Public Health after 16 years of service with them. So he has lots of knowledge and has jumped right in with certain topics that we've had on the table that needed some finishing up with, and some new things that have come along for us, and he's been an excellent addition to the board. Prior to that, we had Bree Eichstedt, who was our first health agent that we hired once that was all in effect, and she did a wonderful job for her first year being here, but she had gotten hired full-time in Greenfield, and it was just too much for her to do Hatfield and Greenfield, so that's why she chose to leave the position. And then we posted, and Charlie applied, and he says it's been a great retirement filler. So hopefully, that stays the way it is. He's brought a lot of knowledge to us as board members, most of us or all of us are new within the last year, so it's been a great addition for us to have the guidance from the Department of Public Health, because he's got all the knowledge and the background to help us with stuff when we have issues that come along.
Charlie.
This is like deja vu. You know how many times I've been in Hatfield over the years? I'm looking at files, and my name is in these files. Like, you know, my hope is to take and help give the Board of Health some professionalism working on projects and to streamline things so we don't add cost to the community. One of the bases that I work with is not only do I understand the environmental side of public health, but I also understand the law side of it. I'm very comfortable working in court by myself and putting things together that way if necessary. I've done it for years. I retired as a state district health officer, which meant that I was overseeing over 100 communities in western Massachusetts, providing them with guidance and direction. And I used to partner up with the Attorney General's office when it was something that was extremely messy, politely said. And my background has been everything from housing to food, all the way to the point of inspecting state prisons, which I'm very thankful that you have none here. But this brings me back to my roots, because I first started in Southampton on the Board of Health when the town was about 2,000 to 3,000 people. And my career marched its way through East Hampton, up to eastern Franklin County, all the way to state level. So please feel free, if you have questions, concerns, all you gotta do is bounce me an email or give me a call.
Charlie, your reputation precedes you, and we're very pleased.
I've been trying to take care of it.
We're very grateful to have you.
Yes.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you.
Take care.
Welcome aboard, Charlie.
I think we're all gonna enjoy this as we move it forward, really. Oh, sure, yeah. Now I...
Just wanted to be sure.
Do a little work. Is anyone else here for public forum? Okay. Larry, your group, HRA? Why don't you have your HRA sit over here, please?
There's seven of us.
Pardon?
There's seven of us. So we could use four. We could sit there.
Whatever you like.
I'll carry left the glasses, I think.
This is a posted special meeting of the...
Would it be easier if you...
Oh, you want us to sit over here?
No, I mean, would it be easier to use that kind of mic, so you can sit down?
Okay, yeah, we could do that.
Well, that way the camera can face you.
They're coming in a while.
That's later.
He'll be gone.
So this is our...
This is Larry Grossman, the Chair of the Hatfield Redevelopment Authority, and they're in tonight to discuss two of the articles that they're proposing for the warrant and town meeting.
Thanks, Jeff. This is a posted meeting of our committee also, and we're here to discuss Article, what became number nine and 10 for the meeting, the annual town meeting next month, or May. And we've also brought our attorney, Donna McNichol, and there's some also, some people in the audience that may add to this discussion that I could introduce if there's some opportunity for that. Without going into the whole history of this, because I know time is limited, we've presented these articles to you for inclusion on the warrant, and we come now tonight to discuss your reaction to them and to ask your support, and also that they would have to be placed before the Finance Committee for, since the first one involves expenditure of money. I know that they usually recommend, or don't recommend, or have no opinion on articles, so I'm not sure of how you develop that on the warrant, but certainly, we would like their, both you and Finance Committee's support on nine and 10. Where nine, I believe, it might be required, I don't remember how that goes. So we're here to answer any questions or to any concerns you might have about nine or 10. And then also, I noticed on Topic 5, to discuss the demolition, maybe you want to, anything you want to discuss on that now, of course, Article 10, and well, this pair of articles would precede any need to demolish a building, so, and save the town over $300,000. So I don't know, we'd like to really ask your reaction to this, and can we count on your support at town meeting for these articles? And if not, we'd like to know what alternative or what you'd like to present with this building that the town people, through the bylaw and through the Historic Commission, have declared historic and put a moratorium on, and even at the end of the moratorium, the building is still historic, so...
Karen, so Larry, you want to give an overview on Article 9, so people in home know...
Oh, yeah, well, Article 9, just for those of you who haven't seen this language, part of it is procedural, that the building has to be declared surplus, which it had been once before. And then this article will carve out a small piece of land of the lot across the street, only 33,000 square feet, which includes the building and the parking area that's presently behind it. It does not at all involve the playing fields, which there's, which will be preserved. In fact, there's another article under warrant that further defines that preservedness, and that in conjunction with the building and the small piece of land, we would like to see a proposal made through the RFP process that the building be converted into over 55 housing, which was actually in line with the previous Pioneer Valley Planning Commission study on the building. It was the recommended use, that we preserve the historical facade on the north, south, and west sides. And the money aspect of it is that we would do the abatement, the environmental abatement that it would be required, and has been actually approved at the previous town meeting, for asbestos and other issues, which would have to be done again if it was to be knocked down or to be developed. So basically, we would be turning over this building for development into a over 55, eight to 10, eight to 11, some kind of small number of units, which with the goal to put this building back online on Main Street, have people living in it across from Town Hall, across from the senior center, the store, restaurant, churches, and the anticipated revenue, again, based on the Pioneer Valley study, is between 40 and 50,000 dollars a year to the town. And that really doesn't, I don't think that number included any other fees, like water sewer fees, that would also benefit the town. So that in a nutshell is the project on Article 9. The twin article that goes with that, Article 10, rescinds the previous articles at town meeting in special that related to the demolition of the building a year ago, and also frees the money, the 300,000 that was approved, and there was also a $92,000 allocation from free cash that would revert back to the town as a result of Article 10. So are there any questions or concerns?
One of your staff.
Yeah, I could just, I just wanted to point out, and my name's Donna McNichol, and the HRA hired me just to develop these warrant articles in hopes that the Selectmen would consider putting them on the warrant this year. The way we organized this was that we believed that if we put Article 9 first, and it didn't pass, then 10 could just be passed over, so that in fact, those other votes and the demolition could proceed. But what we were really hoping is that there'd be one more shot at saving the center school. The HRAs heard from numerous people that they would love to be able to get rid of their big, older, beautiful homes in Hatfield, but remain in Hatfield. I think we know that all through western Mass, there's a lot of us that are getting to that age where we're not quite sure we want to be maintaining big old colonials, but really don't want to leave our communities. And yet, there's not a lot of this kind of housing in western Mass, particularly in town centers, that fit all the community development requirements for elderly housing, being across from Town Hall, being near libraries, restaurants, being near the schools, so that you can actively take part with the kids in the grammar schools and have a really multifaceted life and not have to leave your community, but not stay in that big old house that you raised your kids in, but it's really too much for you now. We do have a developer with us that's at least looked at the project, that believes it is financially feasible and that it would really work. He's done projects like that in the past. I don't know whether you've all seen the paper, but a similar developer is taking over one of the old paper mills in Turner's Falls, a small part of it. And while they may be demolishing the rest of the paper mill, he's going to turn that into this similar kind of housing. These kind of projects, hopefully, will become more and more in western Mass to give us all places to live as we get older, when we, and so that we can walk to facilities and enjoy the center of town life. The $300,000 is a large number, I know, but we took what we believe covered the asbestos and lead paint abatement that would have to be done in the building anyway prior to demolition, and that's really, that figure represents that, plus any incidental costs to doing an RFP and selling the property. We believe it's more than would necessarily be needed, but felt that that was a much smarter way to go than putting in a very limited amount and having to go back to town meeting if the RFP works. The RFP process could be done fairly rapidly. If it doesn't work, so be it. Then the building could still ultimately, of course, be demolished, but it's a beautiful building right in the center of town, and giving it one more chance to be preserved for something that I think the town seriously needs as far as housing goes, is what we're asking you to see how the voters feel about it. Two-thirds vote, as you know, because it'd be a borrowing article, is significant, and if it doesn't get the support of the town and can't garner two-thirds vote, then so be it. But putting it on the warrant, giving the voters one last chance to decide whether they want that building demolished or not, we're hoping that that can happen, and then it can proceed accordingly.
I didn't understand exactly what your interest was today, but I do have several One, our town council earlier shared his view that HRA had no legal authority in the matter of center school. In fact, town meeting had not approved HRA's engagement in this. So just to kind of set the stage, he also asked if there was any contrary, he had received any contrary legal opinions. So just to kind of clean up the background here, has anything changed?
No, I don't think HRA has any interest in that building, except for there being a redevelopment authority and having an interest in it being redeveloped, but as far as any legal claim, that building's clearly under the custody and control of the Select Board, and we very purposely left it there, because the HRA really doesn't have the resources to do an RFP and get that. So no, that hasn't, they haven't gotten any contrary advice regarding that. I mean, Attorney Brackett's advice, I think, is still legitimate.
He's requested any contrary opinions, too.
Yeah, no.
One other thing, I see you have an attorney. Given you have no budget, interested in how you're able to fund your attorney, or is this pro bono?
It is at this time.
Yeah.
You know, we've been down this road multiple times over a decade. We've gone to town meeting twice on sale, denied. Went once to lease it, went out, we had one respondent, and it cost too much to fix up, and they walked away. And we went once to town meeting to ask for the funds to fix it up and use it, and that was denied. So as we've had this discussion once before, the Board of Selectmen have tried every option. There's only X, you know, sell it, lease it, use it, these kinds of, there's only X number of options on the table, we've tried every one. What is it, what is it you think that has changed at this point?
Well, it's a project that is doable, feasible, and we have possible people to do it. There's, I could, I don't want to spend the time going through the history, but there were actually some missteps in the past about those decisions to rent or to turn it into municipal use. There were a lot of possibilities that, in some ways, detoured the ultimate goal of just putting the building back online. So now, right here now, we reacted to the PBPA study. It said the best use...
Housing.
Is market rate housing, eight to 12 units, common conversion scenario. The building could be made to accommodate this use and is recommended. In fact, the second list on this recommendation was building demolitions, is not recommended. Building remain vacant, not recommended. So we followed this study as a redevelopment authority and said, maybe we could answer this criteria, and we went on that premise, and we were successful. So here we are, almost a year later, there is a moratorium on it, the people have spoken that they wish to preserve that building, through the bylaw and then through the unanimous decision of the building Historic Commission. That's where we are now. We're not at municipal use, we're not at rental to the regional library, we're not at charter school rental. I know, we all know the history. So I'd like to just go from now forward, and here we have two articles, and is there support of the Selectmen for this type of project? I mean, there's no downside, the building will be there a year later if you want to knock it down, if it's not developed. There's financial considerations, the town is in very bad financial conditions. Here's a situation where we're spending money to put a building online and get revenue, not spend over $300,000 and have an empty field. That would cost another couple hundred thousand to develop. So we'd just like to know, is it, would this be something that at town meeting, we could have the support of the Selectmen, and if not, what should we do differently?
And I think, Selectmen Boyle, to answer your question directly, I think times have changed. I think that, and I think the use is what makes it so much more financially feasible. As we all know, the price of condominiums in western Mass has been on the increase, and so the amount that you could charge for these condominiums makes the paying back the debt service for a developer much more plausible. I think the other thing is that you're giving them a building that's environmentally sound, and I think that the town willing to do that piece makes a huge difference, because that, let's make no mistake about it, part of what's going on here is that it'll be handed over to a developer with the town having abated the lead and having removed the asbestos. So a developer not having to take on that cost as part of their debt service, I think, is different. So I think that, to answer your question, the difference between using it as town offices, which wouldn't produce any revenue, and just cost of renovating, leasing it to charter schools that sometimes have financial stability and sometimes don't, and those other uses of 55 and elder housing condominiums is a very different use. And as I said, we have a developer here today that believes that it's a financial feasibility and that he could make money if it was turned over to him in the condition we're talking about. So I think that's the real difference between what you've tried before and the proposal that the HRA is bringing before you tonight.
Personally, I have no problem with these articles being on the town warrant, so that the townspeople, you know, can have a say once again as to what they feel is the proper use for the building. I think one of the questions, a question I have, and a question that I think would come up, is when you talk about a developer being interested and might be able to, you know, make a go of it, is there any more concrete information you'll have prior to town meeting? You know, that's a what-if. You know, we have, we've had a lot of what-ifs over the last 10 years, as Mr. Boyle alluded to, and so what if this happens, what's the time, what's the next timeline? We keep having timelines, that's the last time, but that was five times ago, and here we are again, having the same conversation, right? In the fall, that was going to be the last time, when the RFP went out, and here we are. So when do we call it quits? And when do we give it our last best shot? And when do we come forward with a proposal that this is, if you vote this way or that way, this is what's going to happen? Will we have that by the middle of May?
Well, I mean, I think that that can be developed fairly easily. I think we put right in the warrant article that the sale process would be commenced within 90 days of town meeting. That's essentially the RFP process, to see if you get bids. I mean, the truth of the matter is, is that if nobody bids on it, it's done, and that's the end of it. If somebody does bid on it, then a timeline can certainly be put within that RFP as to when the sale will happen and the construction and the renovation will commence. And so I think that it's easy to represent to the town that this process can be thoroughly accomplished and determined whether it will go forward through the summer, because if somebody hasn't bid on the RFP by then, then there's, then there isn't anything that can be done, and it needs to go back to demolition. This is the highest and best use, and it's either going to be bid on or it's not.
Thank you.
To answer, go ahead.
Brian, also to sort of back that up, the HRA decided not to work for some very particular things. One is, I think that's what's compounded the process in the past, is the town has just put this building out there and said, developer, figure out what to do with this. Oh, and by the way, there's the asbestos problem and all this other stuff. It just became overwhelming. Before we even thought about doing this article, we wanted to find out if, in fact, we even looked at it as the HRA, could we do this? Are the costs per square foot prohibitive to the net result of selling the units themselves? We explored that very carefully. In fact, Nikki Sanderson is here, was our Realtor Consultant. We've had Contractor Consultant John McKinnon, I think it's here, and we came up with a number. We said, even if the HRA took this right now, we would, we would be able to do this project. But in the process of doing all that, we came upon not one, but two or three developers who said, well, oh, you have a specific idea, 55 and over? Okay, that's good. You're going to clean up the environmental issues? Well, that's a big unknown, that sure helps us. And by doing this, even if we do that part of it, you're more than halfway there to demolition if, as Donna says, we don't succeed. You're already, it's not like you're starting back at zero, because the asbestos, the lead paint, all of that's removed, and if Associated Records wants to come in with the ball, most of the work is done. There's two issue, a second issue there, too, is that if we segregate the abatement of the environmentals, there's chances are, we'll get better bids than trying to do it as a whole package. I can tell you this from personal experience, because I've taken, as Jeff knows, I've taken in the last two years, I took down a brick building that had asbestos and lead paint things. What I learned from that experience was, separate the two, because you're going to get different bids, and if you give it all to one, like Associated, they have to now subcontract to somebody else. In essence, I backed in what Donna says, if we feel really very confident, this is a go, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to wear egg on our face, or have the town wear egg on its face, to even ask for this again. We know everybody's exasperated. A lot of people will go up to the microphone at town meeting and go, oh, no, not again. We all know that's going to happen. But what we're going to do, and you're right, Brian, it's up to us, to really educate people and let them know, this is a really good, solid project.
Do you want that education tonight? I mean, we have a developer in the audience that could say a few words about this project.
No, we don't, we don't need that. Back to your question about the board, you know, we had this discussion with you some months ago. I mean, it's a responsibility of the board to execute town meetings' decisions, and we're on a path to execute the decision that town meeting made. I don't think, I'll speak for myself, Brian's spoken for himself, and we're not voting on the warrant tonight, but I don't think there's going to be any objection to putting these on the ballot and allowing town, town meeting to take one more bite of this apple. I think maybe this is necessary to finally drive into some final resolution. That's different from saying we're going to be up there advocating, we're there to respond to...
Why wouldn't you? Excuse me, just, I'm sorry, Larry, but nor should we be expected to negate the impact of prior decisions of townspeople. That's the, that's the issue that I have, as we bring it to the table. However, I do agree with my colleagues, if the wish of townspeople is to have it brought forward one more time, fine, and then it's over and done with, one way or the other. However, I don't think we can minimize, minimize the validity and significance of the prior votes. That was a good portion of what we know to be the basis of town meeting. So I don't...
There were issues with the prior vote, it was a confusing vote, it was premised...
No, that's your assumption. That's your assumption.
Well, that's all we can ask, is that, you know, they be put on, on the ballot, certainly... Certainly, you know, you've heard from Donna and Chris and Larry that this will bring income into the town. We have developers ready to go. And as Donna said, let it just go one more time. And when it's done and we follow the process, we don't get any bidders, it's done. It's done. Because how many times are you going to keep going out with an RFP? So, let's just get it on the ballot, let the voters take, make their decisions, and we go from there.
Yes, Mike?
One other comment, and Donna talked about this. The market has changed. I think before, a lot of, a lot of potential uses for that building were perhaps some pie in the sky kinds of things that people were thinking about. But now, I think not only is there a concept, but there's a proof of concept at hand, as is evidenced by the fact that there is a developer that's very seriously interested in this building, has plans that are, that exist at this point to support the concept that the HRA has been talking about, and feels that, that it is a very viable opportunity for him as a developer and perhaps others who have focused in on, on that kind of use for those, for those buildings. So, you know, the other thing too, I think, the attributes in addition to what Lynn was talking about in terms of tax monies coming in, preserving the building, whatever, is that this concept, this, this particular concept, this opportunity, deals with the issues that, that most townspeople have really had concerns with over the years. We do not lose the athletic fields. Those, those fields, that real estate is still in control of the town, in the hands of the town. It is not involved in this opportunity. Furthermore, as I, as I understand it, the town will, in the long term, have the ability to retain control of that real estate. I think that's a critical issue for you guys to hear and for the community to hear, that the town will have a right of first refusal whenever someone decides, or if and when someone decides to sell that, that real estate, either in whole or in part. So, you know, those are two issues that people have always had a concern about. What's going to happen to the athletic fields? And will we ever be able to maintain control of that, of that real estate in the long term, just in case? Just in case the community wants to do something else with it in the long term. And, and this particular opportunity resolves those issues. So, you know, I think that, that it's something that the board should, should seriously consider. If not supporting it, counseling the town, guiding the community, even though the community, yes, has made some decisions in the past out of frustration and, and out of just sheer wanting to resolve this issue with this building, and you feel an obligation to follow those decisions. It may be that with your counsel and your guidance, the, the community would vote to reconsider those, those decisions and, and feel favorably disposed of this project. Which to me is, is a win-win. I can't imagine the community not wanting to, rather than taking money to demolish that building, take it to rehabilitate it, to resolve the environmental issues, make it available for a developer for sale, and have a developer develop it, preserve the building. We've got a three or four million dollar asset after that. We're receiving tax money on an ongoing basis, which is badly needed, as you know, to help subsidize our, the challenging budgets that we're faced with now and in the future. And we still have the center school, we still have the land behind it, and we still got the land underneath it and the building itself.
Just one clarification for folks. Are we back to the 2008 version of what conveys? Essentially, a little parking area off to the, down below on the...
Actually, no.
North side?
Because the zoning, our zoning bylaw, we're talking about concrete housing. And so, the, we can use, put a much smaller footprint on the building. So, we're actually talking about 3,000, 33,400 square feet. So, that's even too small to put a single-family house on today in town center. But, but our concrete zoning bylaw allows this. And the parking is one parking space per every two dwellings.
Oh.
I know, which is very unusual. But we're not doing that. We're actually, why we picked that 33,400 is because it encompasses that parking that exists right there, which is 18 parking spaces. But also, we show a plan in which the town, if it so chose, could add, butt up to it, more parking for the field. So that they, you know, because we're going to have to segregate the parking for the building, of course, and we don't want a lot of cars out, and they are. When the games are here, you see them all up and down the street. So, perhaps the town, because we're going to get revenue, could in another year or so, maybe do some parking there to help mitigate for the field hockey games.
But, but right now, the conveyance would be essentially the top part? The building, the sides, and then the little parking?
Not the sides. We left the sides for access, sufficient access to go down on both sides.
There's 280 square, I'm sorry, 280 feet of frontage. This would only take 200 feet, leaving 25 to the north and 55 to the south. Access to the town on either side. And of course, the walkway to the dyke and road and access. Yeah, none of that would be touched. So, by virtue of this lot being too small, you couldn't put a strip mall there. You couldn't do any other thing but concrete housing or 50,000 or housing under our zoning.
Very good. Anything else? Understand, I don't sense any issue about putting these on the ballot. Go from there and...
Townspeople shall speak.
Drive it to resolution.
That goes for all of us.
The finance committee, we do, like, do we get their endorsement or...
Finance committee will...
How do they, how does that work?
Well, they, they go through each one, and they, they'll do that on their own process and decide which one finance committee supports or...
Do they need to, or should we meet with them if they have questions in that regard?
That's between you and...
Oh, okay, okay, fine. We'll do that.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I don't know if this will affect your discussion on the demolition plan. Do you want to hold off and see how these articles go or...
No, I, I don't, I think we're pretty well set on, we're prepared to execute if that's the decision. And I think Marlene's going to report on coordination on the confirmation of the bids, some coordination with Attorney General's office, and we're all set.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
TPW?
The water and sewer rates, Michael obviously couldn't, excuse me, attend today. He did email me today what it looks like using the old data of 2009, the water conservation grant that we received. So, I mean, I know it's late notice, but unfortunately, it happened today, this afternoon. So, we can surely take a quick look at it and see what the impact will be in regards to it.
Well, we're not going to have time to do that on the fly here. That's going to take some...
And he's more than glad to come in and discuss it with us, so. Just the meeting we had with the town administrator and myself, the town accountant, Michael, we plugged a few numbers into where we would like to be.
I'm sorry, can I just say one other thing, real question?
Yes, sir.
This is, selection's gone, I guess it directed to you, sir. I don't see any reason why there should be any raising of voices on the board. To tell you the truth, I was under the assumption too, that that was a very confusing vote. And a lot of folks in the audience were actually asking, "What are we voting on?" So, I assume that too. But I think we're all civil here, so there shouldn't be any raising of any voices, especially on the board. I just want to bring that out there, okay? Because I don't appreciate it. And, you know, I know we all get hot in the college sometimes, but we're all supposed to be gentlemen, right? So, I'd like to see a little temperance.
I don't appreciate being taken to task for something I didn't feel was being outspoken.
Is that your, is that your normal voice?
Well, let's not, we're not having that argument here.
No, I'm not, I'm not.
Personalities.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking you, that's all. I'm sorry, I'm sorry you felt like you were put on the spot. That would not be right.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not.
you don't have to stand up and count 172 people and one person.
Right.
Well, or if 25 people say nay and the rest supposedly say yay, then even if those 25 people call for a roll call vote, then it won't be, it won't be under them. Roll call vote.
No, if, if seven people.
Seven people object.
Okay, yeah, so they have to coordinate.
Unless the seven, unless the number of 25 is right.
They have to coordinate, yeah.
But I didn't even think of the problem. It doesn't happen much like that. And it's leaving a lot of discretion to the moderator.
Again.
If seven people object, the moderator leaves no discretion.
Right.
If it's not seven people objecting, then it's highly unlikely it's going to be two thirds, wouldn't you think?
Right.
Another one by town clerk, accepting Massachusetts general law, chapter 41, 101A. Excuse me, 110A. Where as any public office may remain closed on any and all Saturdays, as may be determined from town to time, time to time. I, I think what this is really trying to get at is town clerk's office doesn't have to be open on the Saturday before an election. Is that? I'm not sure exactly what her.
She'll explain it on the floor.
She could explain it.
Yeah.
To, next one, article eight. Authorize board of selectmen to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with the Hatfield Renewables LLC. As you recall, in a special town meeting, we secured town meeting approval to enter in negotiations regarding a payment in lieu of taxes. And now just about concluded an agreement and expect to have that available for town meetings approval. The next. Authorize the board of selectmen to accept a donation of an acre of land to budding town hall property from the trustees of Smith Academy to be used for a park. With conditions that the town maintain the property in good order, maintain a place within the park for Smith Academy cornerstone, and maintain a place within the park for the monument to Sophia Smith, founder of Smith Academy, both of which are on the premises. The next one is submitted by community preservation. This is with respect to that same parcel of property to allocate $97,315 from CPC funds toward the rehabilitation and restoration of the park there. So one is to convey the land from the Smith Academy trustees to the town. And two, CPC is proposing to allocate some of their funds to, for a first phase of a park on the site. The article 11, again, relates to that same thing. And asks, in a, again, talks to the overall cost of the phase that they're trying to do in improving, improving the park. And cites the contribution in the previous article of CPC. And also asked the town to authorize to enter, to come up with $50,000, essentially to leverage a state fund under the Parklands Acquisition and Renovations Community Grant Program. Has to be, only a community can go in applying for that grant. It's not private enterprises. Article 12.
Hey Jeff?
Yes, sir.
On article 10.
Okay.
CPC is putting up $97,000. Is that right?
Yes.
Where's the other 100 coming from?
97,315 and 97,318.
There's two 97s there.
It's a total of 194,633.
All of that is going, coming from.
From community preservation.
Okay, great.
One's from their reserve account and the other's from the open space.
The two different accounts, great, thank you.
Article 12, this is submitted by the redevelopment authority. Asking town to rescind the authorization, an earlier town meeting to demolish the center school. And goes on to describe it legally.
Can, can we just go back to 11 and 12?
Sure.
Just since we're on television, we should talk about it.
Okay.
A little bit in that the park being proposed. And I know they have a gazebo thing that they want to build and all that. The only issue we as the finance committee have talked about is there's, there's no money in our, in the budget to actually maintain the property. So it's great that we can build the property, but Phil put in a, you know, a new hire to help in part to take, to monitor that or take care of that. And we simply didn't have enough money in the budget in order to take that hire. So as a finance committee, that is one of the concerns we have, is it's great we can build it, but finding the money to maintain it and keeping it looking really nice and doing it properly is a concern of ours.
Well, also, I think that's what we paid $100,000.
Excuse me.
Right, that's, that's like a gazebo.
The.
Right.
I'll just spend two seconds on the whole thing. I think the total project cost is about $338,000. They've segmented this into two, two phases. A first phase, which would simply deal with the walkways and the shrubbery and the landscaping. Which is the, the phase they're talking about here for this town meeting. And then as a follow-on, a follow-on phase would assemble and build out the gazebo itself.
Right.
So the tact or the argument is, well, in this first phase, simply dealing and being funded here, getting the landscaping straight and bringing in the walkways, there's really not much more to do this year or this upcoming year. It would be in the follow-on, once you got the gazebo in there, when then you're into events, you know, trash cleanup.
Right.
And all the rest, so you're right, you're absolutely right. When we do these things, we need to be considering the operating costs. And there is a tail down the road here very, very soon.
Right, right.
The initial tail's simply.
Right, the initial tail's not too bad because we can, Phil prob, Phil can still handle the lawn mowing and the upkeep over there and whatever else. But.
You're right.
As we go forward as a town, we need to carefully consider.
Yes.
That.
Okay, we're back on 12, redevelopment authority. Asking for rescission of the vote to demolish center school.
Last week, they were looking at fifty-eight thousand and there was still work to be done.
Still working on it.
I was for the water break on Route five.
Right. So sixty-five.
Hopefully. Longest mess DOT doesn't.
Come up with another eight inches of asphalt you gotta put down?
Oh, that, I'm sorry, that does relate to a break.
Thank you. Sorry, just needed clarification on that.
Article four allows the treasurer to do banking. Article five votes appropriate the funds that we might get from the state for, under chapter ninety, for our roads and bridges. Article six, this is an article that would allow the town moderator not to waste a lot of time with, in terms of declaring two-thirds vote, but rather when it's absolutely clear that it's a two-thirds vote, he can just declare it as, it's two-thirds. There is a catch here. If seven people object, then you go through a regular count.
Who put that in?
The town clerk.
Yeah, whose direction?
This is to, pardon?
Did someone ask the town clerk to put it up?
Town clerk submitted it. Whether she did this in conjunction with the town moderator, I don't know. It's simply an acceptance of an existing Massachusetts law.
Yeah.
Article seven, and this is another one from the town clerk about acceptance of a Massa-
Basically, what that means is when one person objects, one person says nay and everyone else says yay, you don't have to stand up and count one hundred and seventy-two people and one person.
Right.
Well, or if twenty-five people say nay and the rest supposedly say yay, then even if those twenty-five people call for a roll call vote, then it won't be, it won't be under them.
No, if, if seven people-
Seven people object.
Okay, yeah, so they have to coordinate.
Less than, less than, no, than twenty-five.
Right. They have to coordinate, yeah.
But I didn't even think of the problem. It doesn't happen much like that. And it's leaving a lot of discretion to the moderator.
Again.
If seven people object, it leaves no discretion.
Right.
If it's not seven people objecting, then it's highly unlikely it's gonna be two-thirds, wouldn't you think?
Right.
Another one by town clerk, accepting Massachusetts general law, chapter forty-one, one oh one A, excuse, one ten A, where as any public office may remain closed on any and all Saturdays, as may be determined from town to time, time to time. I, I think what this is really trying to get at is town clerk's office doesn't have to be open on the Saturday before an election. Is that, I'm not sure exactly what her-
She'll explain it on the floor.
She could explain it.
Yep.
To, next one, article eight, authorize board of selectmen to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with the Hatfield Renewables LLC. As you recall, in a special town meeting, we secured town meeting approval to enter in negotiations regarding a payment in lieu of taxes, and now just about concluded an agreement and expect to have that available for town meeting's approval. The next, authorize the board of selectmen to accept a donation of an acre of land to budding town hall property from the trustees of Smith Academy to be used for a park, with conditions that the town maintain the property in good order, maintain a place within the park for Smith Academy cornerstone, and maintain a place within the park for the monument to Sophia Smith, founder of Smith Academy, both of which are on the premises. The next one is submitted by community preservation. This is with respect to that same parcel of property, to allocate ninety-seven thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars from CPC funds toward the rehabilitation and restoration of the park there. So one is to convey the land from the Smith Academy trustees to the town, and two CPC is proposing to allocate some of their funds to, for a first phase of a park on the site. The article eleven, again, relates to that same thing, and asks, in a, again, talks to the overall cost of the phase that they're trying to do in improving, improving the park, and cites the contribution in the previous article of CPC, and also asked the town to authorize to enter, to come up with fifty thousand dollars, essentially to leverage a state fund under the Parklands Acquisition and Renovations Community Grant Program. Has to be, only a community can go in applying for that grant. It's not private enterprises. Article twelve-
Hey Jeff?
Yes, sir?
On article ten-
Okay.
CPC is putting up ninety-seven thousand? Is that right?
Yes.
Where's the other hundred coming from?
Ninety-seven, three fifteen and ninety-seven, three eighteen.
There's two ninety-sevens there.
It's a total of one ninety-four, six thirty-three.
All of that is going, coming from-
From community preservation.
Okay, great.
One's from their reserve account and the other's from the open space.
The two different accounts. Great. Thank you.
Article twelve, this is submitted by the redevelopment authority, asking town to rescind the authorization, an earlier town meeting to demolish the center school, and goes on to describe it legally.
Can, can we just go back to eleven and twelve?
Sure.
Just since we're on television, we should talk about it-
Okay.
-a little bit in that the park being proposed, and I know they have a gazebo thing that they wanna build and all that. The only issue we as the finance committee have talked about is there's, there's no money in our bu, in the budget to actually maintain the property. So it's great that we can build the property, but Phil put in a, you know, a, a new hire to help in part to take, to monitor that or take care of that, and we simply didn't have enough money in the budget in order to take that hire. So as a finance committee, that is one of the concerns we have, is it's great, we can build it, but finding the money to maintain it and keeping it looking really nice and doing it properly is a concern of ours.
Excuse me. The-
Right.
I'll just spend two seconds on the whole thing. I, I think the total project cost is about three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. They've segmented this into two, two phases. A first phase, which would simply deal with the walkways and the shrubbery and the landscaping, which is the, the phase they're talking about here for this town meeting. And then as a follow-on, a follow-on phase would assemble and, and build out the gazebo itself.
Right.
So the tact or the argument is, well, in this first phase, simply dealing and, and being funded here, getting the landscaping straight and bringing in the walkways, there's really not much more to do this year or this upcoming year. It would be in the follow-on, once you got the gazebo in there, when then you're into events, you know, trash cleanup-
Right.
And all the rest. So you're, you're right. You're absolutely right. When we do these things, we need to be considering the operating costs, and there is a tail down the road here very, very soon.
Right, right.
The initial tails simply-
Right. The initial tail's not too bad because we can, Phil prob, Phil can still handle the lawn mowing and the upkeep over there and whatever else, but-
You're right.
As we go forward as a town, we need to carefully consider-
Yes.
That.
Okay, we're back on twelve, redevelopment authority, asking for rescission of the vote to demolish Center School and the associated funding, three hundred thousand and ninety-two thousand for the, one for the teardown as well as the remediation.
Right.
Article thirteen, again, related to the same art, same thing, same topic. Redevelopment authority is posing that the town declare its surplus, the area of the center school is surplus, and proposes that it be sold, the process beginning within about ninety days after town meeting. Subject to the following restrictions, portion of the parcel, thirty-three thousand four hundred square feet with frontage on Main Street be sold with the building. Building reuse be limited to fifty-five and older housing condominiums. Remaining tax-owned, town-owned playing fields behind, other parts of the real estate not be included in the proposed sale. Any future use be compatible with the historic setting of town center. Current buildings not be demolished and historical facade features of the building not be substant, substantially altered on the north, south, and west or street side. Further, the sum of three hundred thousand dollars be raised and appropriated, transferred from available funds borrowed or otherwise appropriated for asbestos, lead paint removal, and any other necessary environmental cleanup of the building to make it ready for sale, and any other costs related there to, or to the sale. The next-
Well, you wanna talk about this?
Sure. HRA is here to-
So-
Talk to their articles.
So a couple of questions that pop to my mind. One, I know the, the selectmen have the authority to actually, you know, would be given to sell it, but it, would, would the redevelopment authority be the one that are kind of overseeing the project, so to speak? Is that in this article?
I'm not the lawyer, but this does not convey custody and control of the, of the building from HRA, or from the board of selectmen to anyone. So the board, the board of selectmen- The board of selectmen still retains custody, care, and control.
And why would the town spend three hundred thousand dollars to remove the asbestos when we would sell the building and insist that the people, whoever bought it, would take care of that?
Well, two reasons. One, you're gonna spend the money to knock it down. You, you have to remediate the asbestos and the lead. So we're talking about preparing the building for a developer, because financially, it's probably begins to cross the viability line if you put that on a developer, to have to clean up our mess, to then re, to then rebuild the, repurpose the building. So that's what, the articles were actually in the other order, and I don't know if you could switch them back again, where if the project is supported by town meeting, two-third vote, then the, then the rescinding of the demolition could follow. Otherwise, if it doesn't get supported, then you can knock the building. You don't need to rescind anything.
But this is a draft, Larry. This is, this is put together a week ago, so yeah, we're just-
So it could be sourced, but, but I mean, the, we just ended a hearing in this room where we probably had over twenty people here, including a developer and his architect to, that are candidates for bidding on this building as a over fifty-five project. And so it does ask the town to spend money that they've already agreed to spend on the remediation, except now, instead of a hole in the ground that we're gonna have to hire somebody to maintain with another park, it would be revenue estimates between forty and fifty thousand dollars a year, and get the building online, lit up, people living downtown, over fifty-five.
If you pay three hundred thousand dollars for a abatement, do you expect to recoup that on the sale of the building?
No, we'll recoup it through cash flow of the fifty thousand dollars a year tax revenue.
I'm not from, I'm not, my brother has done a building, a school building, and I'm certain that that building wasn't abated or guaranteed, free of all asbestos and so on and so forth when he bought it. So I had, I don't know why we would do that.
If I may interject, what we're talking about is if, if the town demolishes the building as is on the schedule now, the town needs to spend that money prior to demolition.
Agree.
Yep.
But the town, town has to borrow the money to do that.
Correct.
This is not money, this is not money that we have, and so if we're gonna sell it as a finance commi, me on the finance board, I'm gonna say, I'm not, I, if we're not gonna demolish it, I would just as soon save the three hundred thousand. If we're gonna sell the building, that's great, but I still, like Fran, don't understand why the developer would not be responsible.
Just, I mean, I'm making an assumption as well that it would actually cost the town potentially more to do this than it might cost a developer to do it, given the process that we're running.
Well, it might because the town bid it as a demolition and an abatement, where I think if we bid it just as an abatement, it would be a lot less. And we didn't know, we didn't have a firm number. We had to rely on the three hundred because the bidders didn't split up the remediation and the, and the demolition. So it is possible that it's two hundred thousand to do it. But your earlier question of why is frankly, if we spent two hundred and ninety-nine thousand to get that building ready for a developer, we're ahead of the game, 'cause you're ready to spend three hundred thousand to knock it down.
Well, and plus, like you're saying, the potential tax income down the line, you're, you know, you're gonna get no tax income.
You know, four years, four years, five years, we paid for our remediation.
Would, would we assume though that the building is not worth three hundred thousand dollars?
There is a figure.
Do we have a guess at that?
Worth-
Well, 'cause if the building is worth three hundred and one thousand dollars, then we could sell it for a thousand dollars and let the-
Oh, I would think that it's gonna be sold for almost nothing. It could be given away. Again, it doesn't matter.
If the town knocks it down for three hundred thousand, we have an open space available to the town.
What's the town gonna do with it?
Well, it, it belongs to the town. Whatever it is, whatever the future generation decides to do with it, it belongs to the town. If you sell it, it doesn't, it no longer-
We're not selling the field. All we're selling is the footprint of the building and the parking spots behind it. There's no additional land associated with this.
And you were insinuating that, you know, we were ahead of the game by selling it for two ninety-nine. In actual fact, if we destroy it, we still retain the open space for the-
We don't need the, I don't see what we need the open space for, though. We've got thousands of acres of open space.
Just to answer that, you're, Phil is asking forty-seven thousand for a one-acre park. What do you, if you're talking about a seven-acre park, what's that cost? Not to mention, you're gonna spend a half a million on a one-acre park. What's it gonna cost to turn that into a park?
No, but I think, I think what we're saying is seven acres of land with frontage on Main Street in the town of Hatfield has value. Even if there's no building on it, it's actually probably has considerable value.
Oh, yeah, but we're not touching the back, we're not touching six of those acres, six and a half of those acres.
And we're allowing, we're still allowing access to the north and south.
Yeah, the fields are there, the recreation is there.
Right, which is what the town wants.
I mean, I think you're making a great case. If this is actually a viable plan, and I don't know, 'cause I understand there's a lot of history behind this, so, so maybe it's not viable. But the idea that you could actually save a historical building and reuse it for a purpose that could generate tax income for the same amount that it would cost it to destroy the building, seems like a relative no-brainer to me. I mean, I'd rather be getting tax income from, from that. I'd rather be able to see the historical aspects of the building rather than another big open space right there across the street from a brand-new park that we're gonna put in place. If it's possible, then it makes sense, I would think.
Well, we wanna give it a shot. I mean, that's why we, when we met with the selectmen an hour ago, we said, "Let's give it a shot." And the attorney, our attorney said that, he said, "What do you got to lose? If it doesn't work in six months, knock, go and knock it down." But we have a viable guy, a developer, and-
You're really, what we're doing is we're keeping the, the process moving by taking care of the asbestos and the lead paint, so if something didn't happen. But to answer your question, Sean, we don't wanna wear egg on our face either. We don't want the town to wear egg on its face. That's why we didn't even propose this until we had a very certain developer who said they would come in tomorrow.
If it was abated.
Abated, yes.
So the developer is driving the abatement. The developer is not-
We met with a lot, and I know the project your brother did in Florence was a little different calculus. It's a, it's a commercial building, and it was, I don't know what abatement he did at all that he had to do.
Okay. Here's one other fact.
It's just very unusual for a community that's trying to get rid of surplus property to go through the abatement process. They're getting rid of the property to avoid having to spend money on the abatement process.
No, that isn't our thinking.
It doesn't make any sense.
No, that's not our thinking. Our thinking is we're going through the reuse process to get it on the tax rolls and liven this downtown up. Otherwise, we have an open field and a, a three hundred thousand dollar park and nothing. But if we had ten or eleven units in there of over fifty-five people walking around, using the library, using everything, that changes this town center forever.
Fran, and that is the other issue. We're also in this article saying specifically what it will be reused for. So there's no chance that if that doesn't succeed, and it will, we don't, we've, we've already sold three units sight unseen, okay? We know there's a demand. We saw it up on Elm Street. What you're doing is by putting fifty-five in over here is the ideal location for it. Rewind the tape, you can see more about why, why we say this. But what we're basically coming to here is this is a win for the town. We're telling the town, we're telling the, the community exactly how that's gonna be preserved and what it's going to be used for. The footprint of thirty-three thousand four hundred square feet, this is very small, the existing parking and basically the building, two hundred feet of frontage out of two hundred and eighty, can't be used for even a single-family house or a commercial use. It is essentially, if it doesn't get used for fifty-five and over, it can't be used for anything else.
So there's one developer.
We have one confirmed right now.
One developer that has plans and everything.
We had situations in the past where there were several developers that expressed an interest, and then in the end, everybody walked away.
Not really.
They didn't walk away, they weren't awarded the-
Two thousand and eight, we could've had it sold, and you know it.
Yeah.
So, so just one quick question. That, you said nine or ten units. I assume you ran this by, through the planning board because you have to have a, you know, you have to have a certain amount of acreage associated-
Yes, we had two attorneys look at it.
With the- With the-
'Cause in the two thousand and eight or whatever, we, we had, we outlined the exterior-
That's not necessary anymore.
It's not necessary.
'Cause it's over fifty-five.
Right. Over fifty-five, so it's congregate housing.
The only thing we need is fourteen thousand square feet. That's it.
And they'd be sewer and water customers.
Absolutely.
Which might help the enterprise deficit.
How's, how about this one, Daryl? You only need one parking space for every two units.
Yeah, we're giving more spots than that, but-
We're giving eighteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
So, oh, so that's why it's over fifty-five.
Yes.
All right. I was gonna raise that question, 'cause I mean, that seems like a, a concern, you know, that all the new development that's taking place in Hatfield is over fifty-five.
That's why.
In a community that we're trying to run our own school system in, you know, that we're, all, the only people we're bringing in are likely people without children in the school system. You just, over the long haul, you know what I mean? It, it lends itself towards no longer having a school system because-
If you're a school committee person, ask him what it would be like if we decided to fill the school with our own kids as opposed to twenty-five percent of the school being choice.
No, no, I'm not arguing the cash benefit today, but what I'm saying is if it's, if the school becomes seventy-five percent choice, are you gonna get people to go to town meeting and vote to keep, to keep funding a school that no kids from Hatfield go to?
Right, they won't care.
Like that, they won't care. That's my concern. Now, I understand today, cash-wise, it makes sense, but I'm saying there's gotta be a tipping point, at which point you, you can't get support for it anymore. That's all.
But we did-
And you're only talking ten to twelve units.
But what we did, we, when we met, we did wanna, since this is a two-thirds article that requires the same money that was voted last town meeting, we were hoping to get finance, finance committee's support on this article, if you have to weigh in on it. 'Cause I think that-
What we're asking really is for the town to subsidize a developer's project, and I think if ultimately the town can benefit from it, I mean, I think, you know, cities and towns make these decisions every day, so.
Belcher Town remediated the state hospital.
Yeah.
I mean, developers-
But back to that, Sean, a key difference here is we're telling the developer exactly what they can use it for, and there's no difference. They, they can't vary from it.
So, so we as a finance committee, we know we're probably gonna meet next week. We, we know with the budget that we're, we're gonna get close, but we have some things we wanna talk to, and that's one of the things that we have to go through, is really look at the articles and decide that. I don't think that's anything that we're planning on deciding tonight, since we have other things to get to, so.
It's not been decided in the past, and it won't get decided tonight.
Right.
The issue-
But thank you. I, I appreciate all the input, input.
The issue of gaining revenue has been up every time it was considered for sale and turned down.
Right.
There's, there's a variety of factors. Many folks just would simply rather retain control of the space and then see it-
Well, when-
Well, we had fifty thousand in new growth this year. How would you like to double it?
Yeah, we doubled the new growth in Hatfield. And also, you know, it's not forty low-income units, which was presented to the town at the last meeting, that they voted against.
Right.
This is reality, so.
Okay, well, again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we, should we come or send Chris to finance committee meeting to answer questions, or?
I'd like to.
If you'd like to, yeah.
So he'll call you and coordinate what time you-
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, you can email me or I'll email you when the meeting is.
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Article fourteen is one from open space. See if the town will authorize the board of selectmen to take such action, essentially as to add a conservation restriction to the deed on the back acreage behind Center School.
Right.
I'm, again, we, we haven't really had a good discussion of that. I'm not sure-
Have you talked to the open space about this?
No, not at all. They're the ones proposing it, and why, why would we do that without first having a plan for the?
Right.
It, it's entirely within our control, the whole area. Why, why would we put the conservation easement on upfront? Let's decide what it is we wanna do with it first, and then-
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't honestly see why you would put a conservation easement on any land that the town owns. Why would we not let the town, future generations of people who live in the town decide what they wanna do, rather than tell them today, a hundred and fifty years from now, when you're sitting down looking at that piece of property, you can't use it, 'cause today, in our infinite wisdom, we decided that it wasn't the right thing for you to do.
Right. Well, again, we haven't voted on these either, so.
Right.
The next one, this has to do with the town hall, asking to raise, borrow up to eight hundred fifty thousand to fund town hall renovation phase two, which will complete our code requirements for the ramps, elevator, and fire suppression. And there's also an article on the ballot associated with this, 'cause it'd be dead exclusion.
Dead exclusion.
Again, background, when we did the first phase of the town hall renovation, exceeded the assessed value. Once you exceed thirty-five percent of the assessed value, you're required to bring the entire facility to code. We never got a waiver from Americans with Disability Act requirements. We simply got a time variance from the Department of Safe, Department, the State, Department of Safety Architectural Access Board. And our due date for completion, five years expires one September eighteen, which was to mean everything's completed, elevator's installed, inspected, operational, it's all done. So that's the timing. We need to get on this in this coming year. Next one, sixteen, this is vote to sum of money to conduct an inflow infiltration study, and this has to do with DPD with permitting and looking for leaks to its system and-
How much money?
It's forty, forty. It's 40, 40. The next one is capital planning and board of selectmen transfers some of money to develop a master plan for wastewater maintenance expansion. Again, this was dealing with a variety of DEP inspection findings and as well to look at how we might address shortfalls we've been experiencing in sewer. The article 18 has to do with completion of the sewer work on North Street. Recall, we did it in two phases. The first phase is complete and roughly comes from King Street down to the bend in the road as it comes out to Main Street. And then, and then the other. This would bring that to a conclusion by running the sewer out to the Main Street area. It was, that was broken up because of the topography and hydraulics of the area. It made sense economically to, because there was no pitch really in the sewer before, so this makes sense in terms of how the project was split. And the other piece is this will complete all that work there and we'd be able to come in and finish off the roads. Next article 19 has to do with making some water service repairs on Valley and South Street. Trying to get that done for a couple of years here and then we could pave also. Article 20, each year the, has to do with the fire department securing gear for its, fire protection clothing for the, for its members. And they do a portion each year and they're asking here for 20,000. The next has to do with community preservation, I won't read it all, but in essence, each town meeting, community preservation estimates the money that it need, that it being put into its various accounts. It's required by law to put the money in certain accounts, historic, community housing, open space, a reserve. And then the following year, we have to go back and clean it up. And then again, the next article is again, the projection for the following year. So that's what article 22 is. Article 23, these are, this is authorization for certain revolving funds that the town has for building electrical, plumbing, gas inspectors. Also for DPW's motor oil and fire chiefs for dealing with hazardous materials. And there's limits, spending limits on each of them. Article 24. Here we're essentially the main budget article. And then, any reports?
Quick question. I didn't see an article related to the emergency water hookup. We don't need to have that voted on again since we rescinded it at the special town meeting.
Well, right now, we're still dealing with a shortfall.
Yeah.
Still closing a shortfall.
I mean, that just seems quite strange to me that at town meetings, we vote to move forward with something that involves action on another person's part, another town's part, and then, you know, we bail on it and not even present it at the next year's town meeting. Especially when that other side actually did their piece. It just doesn't really, it doesn't seem like a way to do business to me, you know, which is concerning. And it's relatively small, I mean, we're talking a $20,000 commitment. I just think it's unfortunate that it's not included here based on how it was presented, you know, last year. It's an emergency sort of accommodation, it's something in partnership with someone else and we're bailing on it.
Well, I hear you Sean, but in fairness, it was voted on at the following town meeting in the fall to undo that. I mean.
Post, post the work actually being done by the other side, I'm just saying that that's a bad business.
I hear you, but the reality is town meeting voted twice. First time was to move forward and the second one was to put it on hold due to the budget constraint.
We feel to be much better positioned this coming fiscal year to do that.
I don't disagree with you, I just wanted to make sure, you know, that both, both things, both were, both town meetings were mentioned, that's all.
Again, I mean, my position is, you know, God forbid an emergency. It's easy to, you know, sit here today and say, ah, you know, it'll be fine waiting two years. Well, you put emergency things in place because emergencies do come up. And I think that'd be quite a shame and I think, you know, we would have some responsibility there, especially if the emergency was to our neighbors. But, you know, that's not even the point really, it's when you make a commitment involving another partner. I think you've got to try to find a way to come through on.
And I think Sean, if it became an absolute necessity, there could be an emergency hookup.
Yes.
I would imagine, so that we're not, we're not walking away from this. And there was nothing, I don't think in the original agreement that said it had to be done simultaneously. It was whenever Northampton could get it done, whenever Hatfield could get it done, and the two things would be available.
Yeah, it's just a matter of crossing under five and, and putting a valve in. If something did happen, if there was an emergency on either side, either Northampton or our side, we can surely hook up through a fire hose system.
Right.
I mean, it's more of a convenience just to turn a valve and run fire hose. But I mean, certainly, you know, I would just want to assure everybody that if something does happen, we have the ability to hook into their system and name as, into ours as well. The only other thing is the generators. I didn't see the article. Is there an article? Does there have to be an article about the emergency generators?
Yeah, we should.
I haven't received any information.
Well, we should have, we should have an article. Well, we haven't acted on the capital budgeting thing.
I thought that was part of the lease that you have now for July 1st of last year that's on that list.
It is.
Okay, so that was voted last year, correct?
But it was, it was not vote on that list last year. The generators weren't on that list, because that's why I'm asking.
Oh, I don't know, my understanding is you updated that list to, to all-American.
The discussion is about the two, two generators. One, we discussed this in capital planning and there was a strong sense that we needed to get on with it. Significant budget issues. So we addressed it with DPW through their lease program. And one generator would be to support the town hall. And particularly, it would be size to support an elevator where you've got seniors using it among others. If power, power went out. And the other generator was going to go up to the highway garage where, you know, at a time you might well need power to pump your gas or those kinds of things. There's no ability there, so this would be a generator at that, at that location. It was not, it was being funded out of his operating budget, existing operating budget with no increase.
Which was voted last year.
Right.
I just didn't know if there had to be an article, because we removed it from capital planning, we removed the funding source.
We left.
You're funding it out of your operating budget, which was voted at town meeting.
We left it in the capital plan and identified the funding source as the operating budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is it in this budget?
Yes.
Yes. It's just in the DPW operating.
How much is the lease?
No, the lease, the actual lease number that has been passed for the past five years is not going to be increased because of the cost of some of the vehicles. Some of the vehicles dropped, so there's extra, there's access money in that lease program. So instead of purchasing another vehicle or doing whatever, we said, well, we can, I went to the lease company and asked if we could lease the generator's costs out of that. And the bank agreed to it, so it's really a win-win, I mean.
Yeah, that's great.
I will cover the town hall, the elementary already has one plus the highway.
All right. What's your comment out there?
High schools got their own?
No.
No, the only building that doesn't have it, but.
But in any emergency, we'd be at the.
This building and the elementary.
This building and the elementary. Okay.
You probably wouldn't be operating one school.
No.
You'd have to extend a period of time without power.
No. Well, and the only thing you would need is, is if, if it was some sort of emergency or bringing, bringing people to stay at the high school or at the school.
Right, so you would use the elementary school.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Other than the HRA issue with, with respect to their articles, any other significant concerns or? Who you want to come back to?
I would guess we need to digest this and talk about it and, because I think for some, this is probably. But first glance, but at a first glance, I don't. All comes down to money, what we can afford.
Talk now about the budget?
Yep.
Marlene, why don't you walk us through?
Should we go right to the operating budget?
Marlene, why don't you start with the first front page?
Sure.
And the changes, the changes that you made that all of a sudden made the budget look a whole lot better.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so the top half, the top portion under expenses, you have your operating budget, the annual town meeting articles, state and other charges. That has not changed right now. And then, so you have a total gross budget of $11,574,005.69. State receipts.
Which is $400,000 less than last year.
Yeah.
Local receipts, we were able to, we took a look at our receipts, the local fees, and we were able to increase those, so that helped offset the, the bottom number. So you have your enterprise fund, water and sewer enterprise fund revenues, community preservation. We're using 96,000 of free cash and stabilization. Giving us a total receipts of $4,509,706.
Yeah, for the benefit of the finance committee, that's a proposed draw from stabilization and we'll get to it.
And I'm not seeing that number here, so is that under, is that the other available funds? It's not just listed on the same line as stabilization?
You're talking about the 60,000 we would be using from stabilization? Is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm not seeing that.
There is no number on the first page.
Read the rest of it.
Right, right. So fiscal year 17. In 16, at the special town meeting, we used 147,715 dollars from stabilization. That is in the other available funds, that 477,410 in fiscal year 16. And to the right fiscal year 17 column.
Yeah.
We are proposing to use money from stabilization to fund the water and sewer deficit, the fiscal year.
This year's water and sewer deficit.
There's an article.
And so what would that bring stabilization to?
Ah, I did not bring, let me see, do I have that with me here? I just had that number the other day, I believe it was 351,000.
Before the 60 or after?
No, it was three, wasn't it 351 and then we took 147 out? And then we took another, then if we take another 60 out, so we would be somewhere around 100,000, 150,000? I don't know Derek, my math doesn't work that fast.
I think we threw 30,000 in.
I just had that the other day.
We did not put any money into stabilization.
147 came out of free cash.
Right.
Yeah, that would have been starting. But.
Daryl, didn't the 147 at our last town meeting come out of free cash? That's where we transferred it from, not stabilization?
No, it came, all came.
Stabilization could not take it from.
We're going to use the free cash.
Right, right.
It was, we were talking about, I got it, right.
Right, and that's.
Right, okay.
I received a report from the accountant the other day, I just don't have it with me.
That's okay.
It'd be good to get that number.
Yes, I will send it out to you tomorrow. So then the other change.
How much are you anticipating, how much are we anticipating? That how much is being held in free cash right now that's unusable?
2,000 dollars.
That's unusable though.
Oh, unused, oh, we're certified 98,000.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, what's, what's the state holding?
They held 109,000.
Okay, so there's another 109,000.
9,000, right. So that will become available later on in the year.
Did it use any free cash this year?
Yes.
This past year, we used free cash.
How much did, how much free cash did we use the last, the past year?
Yeah.
It's right there Sean, highlighted in fiscal year 16.
Yeah, 234, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
You've got roughly the same, you, I mean, you don't have it available, but.
Yeah.
We have roughly the same.
Well, no, well, we only have 109 available, right? Well, once it becomes available.
109 in addition to the 96 or the 98.
It was 109,528.
So you have 200,000, essentially 109,000 which you can't use.
Right.
Yeah, rough, yeah.
And that's if, you know, well, and we'll, we'll get to the sewer deficit, so.
Before we make a firm decision on the entire package, I would like to revisit the police department. I'm not quite sure.
We'll get there.
Okay.
We'll get there.
Thank you.
The other change was in new growth.
Right.
We are aware that there will be additional new growth. 75,000 is still a conservative number, but we are able to increase that from 50,000.
Right.
Therefore, right now, at the bottom of that page, you see that we're, we're over the levy limit by 64,073.
And can you just, and maybe I missed it, the enterprise fund revenue, I see that we're projecting more this year than last year.
Are you looking at the sheet Sean, right here?
Yep, is that because of the expected increases to water and sewer?
We can revisit, well, we did discuss this at a previous meeting and the reason I provided that for you is I wanted to take a look at the last several years. I went back to 2011, between 2011 and 2015, I looked at what was reported on the recap sheet. And so I, I took the average, but the number I'm using on this sheet is a little more conservative. It is an increase over what we were looking at a couple of weeks ago on this sheet. So for water, we reported between 2011 and 2015, I came up with an average of 404,680 dollars in water receipts. And on the sewer side, it's an average of 346,999 dollars in sewer revenues. So I decided to bump the sewer to 330, I was using 321,000. And on the water side, I was using 388,000, I bumped it to 390,000. But the bottom of that page, on the left-hand side, the sewer, that's the projected deficit. On the water side, it would be a surplus, not much, but it is enough to cover the deficit in sewer.
Which, which paper are you looking at?
This one right here. The sheet right here? Do you have that?
No.
Oh, you don't?
I had a, some, well.
This covers it.
I'm sorry, you should have received that.
Right.
Here, I have some extra copies right here.
So we still have the, I guess, there's still a deficit of about eight grand, right?
Uh, no, no.
Taking care of it.
So last week, we were looking at a potential deficit of eight grand. What I did was look at the numbers reported on the recap between 2011 and 2015.
Okay.
For water, it averages out to 404,680 dollars in revenues.
Yeah.
For water, I bumped up the estimated revenues of 388,000 to 390,000. It's still a little conservative, you know, it's, but the average, according to the recap reports, the average is 404,000.
Okay.
On the sewer side, the. On the sewer side, the average is three hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Originally, I was using three hundred and twenty-one thousand in estimated revenues for sewer. I increased it to three hundred and thirty thousand. It still gives us a deficit of thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
For sewer.
For sewer.
But recall, we combined it too.
On the water, though, there is a surplus, which would take care of that potential deficit.
Well.
Again, that's just, that's just covering the direct costs and indirect costs, that's not. That's not covering capital or any interest or principal debt.
And it's, and last year, we had the DPW director's salary.
Yes.
Part of it in there, that's been taken out.
That's excluded.
So we're getting like farther away from, which is okay, but we're moving away from an actual enterprise.
Never been close.
No, and we're getting farther away.
It's not operating as an enterprise.
Yeah.
A full enterprise fund.
Which has to do, for townspeople's edification, that has nothing to do with us not trying to implement the enterprise funds. It has to do with size and.
Correct, correct.
Usage and the number of people on it. I mean, that's the reasoning, that it's never really gotten to the full-blown scope of larger cities.
Well, so that, so there's a, you know, I guess, a relatively small number of folks on it. But, and since these numbers now take out the DPW director's salary, again, the town is every year steadily increasing our subsidizing of, of the sewer system, you know, particularly those folks who are on septic. You know, my concern continues to be that, you know, they're subsidizing it, at the end of the day, when their septic goes, no one's subsidizing them. I get it when it comes to town-owned properties, of course, we want to make sure we have the sewer for them, you know, but the rates, you know, need to cover the cost. I mean, I think, I think that was, or at least, you know, and I shouldn't even say that, they don't need to fully cover the cost. But we have, as a town, have to decide how much we're comfortable with sort of capping our subsidizing of it. And I think that needs to be a broader discussion, I don't know what, you know, committee, I guess, that would go before the board of selectmen, I don't know what committee would bring it. But, and I think we say, you know, fifteen, twenty percent, whatever it might be, because of our schools, our fire department, and because we want to attract people to town. It's good to have a system. So again, I think we need to have that larger conversation.
One of the things we did propose here, we talked about it in the articles, is essentially a look at modernization and maintenance and modernization of our, a master plan for our sewer system. It's not going to be a short-term effort, it's got to be a long-term laying out, expansion of the system. So simply you get your costs spread over a larger base, you've got half the base now, you're looking at the other half. It's a significant upfront investment to get there. So there's nothing going to happen overnight, this is really long-term, taking baby steps, yes, sir.
And, and so what you really have here is a pretty bare-bones budget.
Yes.
It is.
And, and my concern, to kind of piggyback on Sean, is I think you need to address the thirty-seven thousand surplus by doing something with rates, and I know everybody.
The deficit.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Deficit, by doing something more with rates, and I know townspeople hate to hear that, and I apologize for saying that, but we've taken all the loans out of it, all the interest, all the, all the capital, we've taken the DPW director's salary out of them. I mean, it's really.
Just to be clear, that wasn't the whole salary?
No, it was a portion, it was a portion, a portion came from water, a portion came from sewer, and a portion comes from the town. Now, it all comes from the town, which I can live with all of that, but.
Which it was originally.
It was originally, right. It would be nice if the select board would address that somehow, because otherwise, it's going to continue to grow. In my, and I know it's great, we combined the, the water, water and sewer so that we wouldn't have problems, we could always transfer some, but I still would like to see that closer to zero. So I think you have to address rates.
We intended, yes, we told you that.
Yes.
Yeah, at least water has a deficit.
Surplus.
A surplus.
Along with the sewer increase.
Right.
But why would there be, is there a water increase? Why would there be a water increase if the, if the water's not only covering itself, but covering itself?
It's truly not covering itself for an enterprise.
Oh, well, because, yeah, because we took everything out, because.
We're covering these, what, a hundred thousand dollars here of indirect expenses.
There are a few loans.
And salaries, so three hundred.
Right.
Six hundred, what, seven hundred thousand dollars worth, right?
Yeah.
That's not against the town, it's against the enterprise.
Well, then it'll be interesting to see the proposed rates, because I mean, so if we're going to look at sewer actually covering more of its costs by increasing the rates, is that going to be on par with, or, I mean, water, is that going to be on par with sewer? Because they've got the deficit, so they're already working from a deeper hole, and if we're saying, well, and you've got to cover more of your indirect expenses, then I would think they'd be looking at more of, you know, of a substantial sort of increase. So it'd be interesting to see the numbers, and if we're talking about water potentially going up as well, especially after, you know, more than a year of subsidizing the sewer.
Well, water and sewer have been subsidized since we entered the enterprise.
Yeah.
And there.
Years of subsidizing.
There are some additional costs on the water side of it. If I get the West Street Water Main principal and interest.
Yes.
And water transmission design. Huh?
Yeah, you have that whole new project.
Right, that, but that is being covered with.
Water revenue.
With water revenue, as opposed on the sewer side. It's the budget, that's, that's it.
And when considering increases to water customers, I think we also need to think, since we've been covering the deficit, and it was an enterprise, especially a separate enterprise previously, all of those surpluses could have been built up to cover a lot of additional expenses. So again, I think water, you know, probably has been covering itself, or closer to covering, significantly closer than sewer to covering itself, and maybe would be there had it had years of actually keeping its surpluses, potentially. So I think we should look carefully at the water increase.
Yeah, water has essentially paid for itself in terms of operating expenses, period. Not debt, not capital, not.
Nothing's covering debt, yeah.
No big tic, no big tickets, it's, it's been getting by.
As is sewer, yeah. On that ground, they're all even, I mean.
Yep.
Shall we walk through the budget?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. Line three, there is a slight increase for the administrative staff to increase an additional ten hours and provide support to the accountant. Treasurer's staff, there is an increase to fund the position for the adminis, or, I'm sorry, assistant treasurer for thirty-five hours. And that was offset by reducing the tax title budget. Just one correction, I need to update the spreadsheet, Oliver Smith will elector line twenty-three, the town clerk requested twenty-five dollars, and I had missed that. So that will change that number on the front.
How dare she?
Right. So, so can we talk about the treasurer?
Yes, absolutely.
Since the finance, so Fran and I had the opportunity, we sat with Jeff and Marlene the other day, just to kind of preliminary go through it. Fran was, anyway, and Laura Lee sat in with us, and so we had a discussion. Originally, the finance committee had said we were okay with, I believe, funding the position up to twenty-four hours. And so Laura Lee, you know, pointed out, and others pointed out, that, that was simply not enough hours to get it, to get the job done and to do it right. And so I certainly think it's something we can talk about, but for me, the bottom line, I came out of that meeting as frustrated as I could be about, not, well, I was frustrated because, you know, we have to, we're all of a sudden going from someone that we're paying sixteen hours, and now we're going to be paying thirty-five. But financially, I don't see any, any other way to do it. What she does, this is Edwina's job, is critical, does most, does all the payroll, plus all the other, all, all the other stuff. We've had some issues financially in the past couple of years, and so I, I would have a concern of funding that position any less than that, just because we can't afford to have any more mistakes and go back to special town meetings and try to fix things, so. But certainly, I wanted to throw that out to the rest of the finance committee that was there.
Just want to add that additional work to the treasurer's office for the assistant treasurer is the lunch bucks program.
Right.
You had pointed out the other day.
Right.
Yeah, retirement, something else as well, where she used to just be able to send a check, now she actually needs to do all the disbursements, figure everything out, and send out an entire electronic file to tell the retirement boards, you know, how, how everything's broken down amongst the teachers, how, you know, how that was over as well. So, you know, I think it's coming from, probably, they need to maybe scale down or whatever, I'm near me an hour or so. It's an additional task now that the town needs to do, it's not just, we don't simply write a check anymore and send it. We have to, you know, put together, you know, a whole electronic, digital data file, and she needs to track all of that now, and that needs to get sent. But there's other tasks as well, it's just, you know, as technology evolves, there's more, there's more duties and responsibilities that fall into that position.
The other situation we have in the collector, collector's office is that we had people working more hours than were being paid for. Because of the situation involving an employee who was retired and was limited in terms of how many hours she could work on the record, and so, but she was working above and beyond what she was being paid for. And so now we're in a situation where that person is retiring for a second time or leaving, and we have to cover those hours.
And we can't find anyone else that's willing to work for.
Right, right, and we have to pay for those hours. That, that was, you know, a big part of the situation that we, that we find ourselves in.
Right.
And that office is the front door to the revenue coming into the town, and it's important that we have that pot as well-staffed and able to do the work as required.
Was any thought or consideration or investigation done into, well, I have no doubt there's a need for a second person, but can some of the duties be removed? Have we looked into going to a payroll service for the town?
Yes, we did, yeah, we did.
And?
About eighteen thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
And they, they couldn't even tell us that they could eliminate one, save us one day a week of time. They, they said they would probably save us less than eight hours.
How many companies did you talk to?
We spoke to one, when, when the price came, and they're all relatively in the same ballpark, you know, we don't have a lot of extra hours a week, and, you know, we spent, you know, hours with the first company, so I think, you know, if it came in where it was something that made sense, at that point, we would have contacted several more and have been able to get, you know, the best price to come forward, but, you know, with what, with what it is that they were offering, you know, it, it wasn't enough to take away enough of the workload of our payroll, in-house payroll.
So it was going to be about eight hour, they had said it would be approximately.
Less than eight hours a week they could save us, and it was, it was just under eighteen thousand a year.
And the payroll service does the easy job, they cut the checks, the front-end loading is still.
Yeah, here.
Right.
Well, that's going to be part of my question, and I don't know how deep we may have dug, at least at, for this time, but maybe it's something to look into. But I would think that other work groups within the town would submit their own information and not have to come to town hall for that. I would think the schools could submit, if, if we had that type of a service, or even to get it here, for that matter, online through a system, and that, that wouldn't have to be done by somebody sitting in Laura Lee's office.
And actually, the schools could, yeah, I mean, the whole town could do something, some, like a lot of companies are doing now, where everyone moves to electronic timesheets, and so then you don't even have that input, you know, just someone looks over all of the numbers, while their supervisors approve the electronic timesheet before it's dumped into the system, and then ADP or whatever the service is, uses that information to cut the checks versus actually having someone physically putting them in.
I, I certainly wasn't part of the conversation, but I.
No, we did, we did.
I think we, maybe it needs, as I said, not maybe for this budget cycle, but certainly something I think we should look into. I mean, it's twenty sixteen, that's what every company, large company, and probably most towns do something similar to that.
Yeah, and we did, we did talk about computerized data processing, and, and there's a cost associated with that as well, and so I think in our discussion, we saw it as a goal, someplace we want to go.
Okay, right.
For the future, and hopefully we would realize some sort of savings after we made the initial investment and got everything set up and keep it drained.
Good, yeah. I, I guess, my, my point being, I think it's something worth looking into, and maybe we need to continue to look into it for, for down the road, and see if it makes sense, it, it might not make sense, but, you know, if we don't get enough information about it back, we're, we're never going to know if we're making a decision based on apples and apples, or on apples and oranges, and so.
And in my conversation with the superintendent, he indicated that the school department was going to be starting on this in the next year, and there was a two-year phase in. So there's a move in that direction.
My overall concern is related to the, I mean, I've got serious concerns about it, it's just because we've increased our, we've been building our financial team, so I wonder if there's opportunities for collaboration there, we've increased the number of hours we have for an accountant, so we've been investing in this. And right now, we're talking about investing when we don't have the funds to do it, and increasing someone's hours, so I imagine there's increased healthcare costs. I know previously, the person qualified for healthcare anyway, but imagine there's going to be some increased healthcare costs. And, and this is a position that will likely continue and continue and continue, so it's a long-term commitment, really, essentially a full-time position. And I just don't know that that's where we are this year, you know, I think this year, we've got to come up with some creative solutions, and if anything, maybe increase, give some extra hours to make up for some of the extra work that Edwina was doing, but to create another full-time position right now, just seems short-sighted to me, since we're not even, we're struggling to meet, you know, to just cover our budget year after year. We're using free cash, we're using stabilization, so another full-time position's a lot to ask.
Well, I mean, I agree that in some ways, it's a lot, a lot to ask, but, I mean, I think you have to look at it from a perspective, we're not starting from even.
Right.
We're starting from a complete disaster, essentially. You, you know, you started from a place where you hadn't, where we didn't know what the fund balances were, we were spending money we didn't have, I mean, not to sugarcoat it, but it was not a good situation that we were in, so it's one thing if you're starting from everything's working at a minimal level, to getting it, making it better. We're starting from it ain't working, to, you know, we got to get to a point where it works better than that, you know? I mean, to me, that's really the most important thing we can do this year, is to be able to, when you put the budget together, to be able to have confidence that the numbers that are in there are, that you're getting to do it are accurate.
Sure, I mean, but with the problem.
But our financial house in order, that's what we need.
Right.
And, and that's fine, I mean, but I often think that when folks feel like there's a problem, you know, we think that, you know, putting money towards it, increasing the accountant's hours, increasing the treasurer's is going to solve the problem, and I don't know that it will. I mean, I think, you know, maybe it's a systems thing, I think it's, you know, probably larger than just the people who are in the offices. But again, I, I think you're right, Sean, in that we're not starting at even, so maybe this is a short-term fix, but we're actually putting into place something that's more long-term, you know, maybe, I don't know, if you've looked at, is there a way to bring in someone on a temporary basis, you know, a year commitment? That's my concern, is that this position's going to be on the books, and it's always going to be on the books, and we're not even covering our budget right now. We're struggling.
Sean, we're, we're not adding a lot of hours, as I said, we're paying for hours that have been worked previously.
Right.
So we're not, we're not adding a lot of hours to that office, we're paying.
We're paying for the hours that have been worked that we're no longer getting for nothing.
Right.
And again, I, not that I really question that, again, I think the problem, again, I think it's a systems problem that, when that came up, and I'm new, so I, of course, I might be surprised, but it seemed like everyone was surprised. And so, you know, I think more informa- information needs to be presented about that. You know, how many hours per week, and is this a seasonal thing? Um, you know, do we bring someone in for part of the year? Do we move to a position like we were talking, a general clerk that has accounting experience that helps out across the board at town hall? I mean, I think these things just need to, you know, be done in the context of a larger plan to really fix, um, you know, our financial house. And, and maybe that's the case, but I'm, I'm not seeing the plan, the long-term, five-year plan. And these are the steps that we're taking to get the financial house in order. And part of that step is increasing the treasurer's hours, along with the accountant. This is how they're going to work as a team. And this is what the benchmarks that we're looking for over the next few years.
And Sean, if you start talking about, um, part-time, uh, you're talking about people coming in as subs. You're talking about an applicant pool that is not very highly qualified, and there's a lot of transitioning and training and stuff that goes into those people to do the work on a, on a, a reduced-hour basis. The, the applicants that you get, when it's a full-time job, which is what we're proposing here, are just so far and away more qualified, highly qualified, uh, capable of doing the job that needs to be done, uh, that it's well worth the investment.
I think the other piece is that we have some unique, uh, things that are happening here, uh, that aren't necessarily applicable to everybody who does accounting in the general world or has some accounting background, I think Eric would attest to, that if you're working in the private sector and you're coming to town five hours a week or ten hours a week to do something, not every task, but there are certain tasks that are very specific to what we're doing as a municipal government that people aren't doing in the broader world because of the way accounting municipal governments works. So, you're going to have to teach them how to do that essentially in some way. And, and I think that is an, an issue to consider, that the applicant pool of people with some finance experience might be large, but the applicant pool of people with finance experience in a town is a lot smaller than, than that.
The financial management area is one of the critical pieces we need to clean up. We're, we're at a stage of trying to get to stability. We've got a new treasurer, we have a new accountant, we've got a new collector. I mean, it's going to take a little time for that team to build out. And now, we're going to have a new assistant treasurer as well. So, goal one to me is to stabilize the situation. And then, there clearly, there are always opportunities to look at how we're doing business and can it be doing differently? Can it be done differently and more effectively? But right now, we're in the, in a rebuild situation.
Right, there are certain things that we know we have to do differently than the way we were doing it before. There's no question about that.
Right.
Uh, so, I mean, we have to address those things, I guess, at some level, so.
Right.
I, I mean, I think we're looking at a big salary position here, a full-time position. I get the need, I'd like to see this team, you know, spend some time working on this and see where we're at, with some maybe additional help, part-time help. Uh, but, you know, we're looking at a forty-five thousand dollar a year salary position, fairly close to what we're-
Sean, included in that number, excuse me for interrupting, is five thousand dollars for consulting.
Okay, so-
Short-term.
Short-term, right, that would go away next year.
That'll go away.
We have someone leaving next month, or, or May, rather.
Right.
And now, will this person be hired with any sort of agreement that after a year, they will be able to negotiate?
Correct, yes, you're right, yes.
Forty thousand to type, pay for the type of professional that we're talking about here. Is there any indication in those conversations that after a year, they'll be eligible for any additional-
The treasurer is independently elected, she'll be hiring.
So, I think.
As far as, um, no.
No?
I mean, it, you know, it would just be your standard, um, you know, cost of living increases.
So, this is the salary of the position, the forty thousand. Because, you know, and, because we also need to know, like we've talked about in the past, that we've got to remember next year, they'll pull that five thousand, um, you know, out of that line and out of the budget, rather than it just, you know, continue in there and be used for another consulting.
Well, in this case, just because it's tied to a speci- one specific job.
It might be, it'll be-
Either you won't spend it or you won't, you know.
Right.
I have it separate within my budget, I just-
Right.
It's not just a general-
Before I submitted it was-
I think that's a bigger concern, when you're talking about like a general expense budget, where I spend five thousand dollars on a new computer this year, and then I spend five thousand dollars on a new copier next, you know, and it keeps rolling along. I mean, you can't really, you have, to raise the person's salary, you'd have to actually act on that.
I, I think the last thing on this particular budget line before we move on also is that it include, that amount incl- for next year that's mentioned already includes twenty-seven thousand dollars that's being expended today.
Yeah.
So, the difference, I, I just want to make sure people don't think we're adding a forty-five thousand dollar position. What we're doing is, we're increasing a twenty-seven, you're right.
We're increasing a position, but we are creating a full-time position.
But even at the twenty-seven, they were eligible for benefits.
For benefits, right.
Right.
Okay, good, next.
Uh, the next page, page three, unless anybody has any other questions on that previous page. The police department, that represents a one and a half percent, uh, cost of living in addition to a two-dollar an hour increase, uh, for the lieutenant and a two-dollar an hour increase for the sergeant.
Can we just go back and just answer the question of why we moved public building maintenance, did you be done with?
I'm sorry?
Why public building maintenance got moved?
From where?
To facilities, it was moved to facilities.
Always, always was. We just combined two, two lines.
No, I know, but it, it, when you look at the budget year to year, every time you combine lines and move lines and change lines, then it makes it harder and harder to compare the budget year to year.
Well, well, it, it shows it here, I believe, it moved to deep-
Moved, yes.
And it shows it netted out.
It was moved to line forty-eight, facilities and management maintenance, now it's just town hall maintenance and facilities.
Frankly, I thought, I thought it was finance committee was suggesting we do that.
Yeah, that was-
I, it's, I'm not objecting to it, I just wanted to know-
Okay.
Where it is, I want to be like, keep track of it.
We had a meeting early on, I thought that's what everybody agreed.
It gets confusing if you, if you change.
Right.
Well, we, we agreed to do what you-
No, that's fine, I can, no, no, I told, I told you before.
Okay.
I had no particular interest in a hundred dollar, yeah, other than keeping track of it.
Bad statement.
So, in the, so, we're at the police department. You, so the selectmen voted to-
Selectmen are recommending a two-dollar an hour increase. Two and two.
And, and we had one and fifty cents.
Right.
Right.
So, and-
And I know Selectman Khan would like to speak to that as well.
Yeah, go ahead.
The, the problem is, is that the information was presented to us by, uh, by Mike, who is the current lieutenant. Average-wise, even with that increase, we don't reach the average-wise that is reflected in, in financial statements for surrounding towns, many of which are, are smaller communities than us. And yes, quite frankly, you could say, you know, it's just not going to happen. But what do we do? Are we trading off experience? Whoever comes in is going to start from scratch. And it's my sense, at this point anyway, that the, the amount is not exorbitant. When I negotiated with them, because that was my, part of my assignment as, as a member of the board of selectmen, I indicated to them that, uh, the most I would, I would propose would be four dollars that is, um, over and above what they're currently making, spread out over two years. Now, what does that do? That brings them to the medium figure. They're currently at nineteen fifty an hour, and currently, surrounding towns are paying twenty-three and change. So, I, I think it is justified. We're talking about individuals who have been around for a considerable period of time, are well-versed and well-known in the community. And I would hate for us to see us having to start over. That being said, I also apprec- appreciate, believe it or not, the financial concerns that we have. But you, you got to bend sometimes, and my sense is, is that this is one of the areas where we really need to bend. Especially since it's spread out and brings them to an equitable situation in two more years. But during that timeframe, they're still behind. Same responsibilities, and so on and so forth, so.
So, Pat, this is a, this is a four-dollar increase over two years?
Over two years. The, the revised budget should reflect two dollars per individual, per lieutenant, per sergeant.
One each.
Pardon me?
There's only one each.
Full-time.
Yeah, right, right, but it's, yeah, but each position, uh, is accountable for a two-dollar increase this year, and then two-dollar increase next year. That all has to be, that's not, we're not doing next year's budget. But be, keep in mind that at this point in time, there's still two dollars below the average for much smaller communities as well. Sometimes you have to bite the bullet to keep good people. There are other times, no pun intended, excuse me. But the reality is that you do what you need to do so that we can retain individuals without getting, you know, getting carried away with this whole business. And when we're talking about individuals who currently are four dollars behind on the average per position, that's, that's something I think we might be able to stretch, sir.
Do we, do we know how long the lieutenant has been here and the sergeant has been?
Uh, I can't say exactly, but I, I'm pretty sure Mike has been here about ten years, and I don't, I'm not sure about Clint. But please don't quote me on that, we could find it out aveng- uh, you know, quickly, but I don't have the financial figures in front of me, uh, you know, payroll and stuff, so.
So, so when we as a finance committee talk about things like this, townspeople should understand that it's not, nothing personal. We're looking at this as a budget. And what can we, you know, we've got a pot of money coming in, a pot of money going out. And so, when we talk about these, these things, and so, I, I always, it's hard to talk about salaries because then people perceive it as-
Personal.
Personal. And, you know, as a finance committee, this is not personal. This is one of the tightest budgets that we've run into in years. And so, we also recognize the fact, as Pat so eloquently pointed out, that we do need to take care of some of the peop- some, some of our employees. That's why we recommended, you know, that the council of aging director, she, uh, was recommended a four-dollar increase, and we recommended a, a two-dollar increase, which is half of the recommend. And we thought, when we looked at the police budget, that what, um, Chief Osley was recommending was a two-dollar increase. And so, we thought to keep it in par with what we had decided to do with COA, that we would offer, again, half the increase. So, that was, again, noth- nothing personal, but we did want to, we do see the value of these people that have worked for the town for a long time, someone like Jane that's worked for a long time, and certainly the lieutenant and, uh, um-
Sergeant.
Sergeant, that have been here a while, and we, we appreciate that. So, it, it, it does get, these things do get difficult. We had no, we did not talk about giving them another two dollars next year, too, but that will be for next year's budget to talk about.
Excuse me, Daryl, but that is exactly what I pointed out, we're not talking next year's budget. Overall, in my discussions, I was talking four dollars over a two-year period, with the understanding that has to be renegotiated. We don't negotiate budgets in advance, we plan within our, our own structure. And so, hopefully, we'll be able to, uh, you know, apply the funds and, uh, not become, uh, so way out of whack, that it's absolutely ridiculous. I can't, I just can't see any of us here, whether it's yourselves on the finance committee or ourselves on, on the board of selectmen wants to go down that road.
Okay. Well, we, we will certainly, when we, when we're meeting next week, we'll talk about, we'll, we'll talk about this.
Can we, um, it's not highlighted in yellow, but, um, I was actually, maybe can wait for Fran, but I'd like to talk about the school budget.
Increased one hundred seventeen thousand.
Before, before we go to school, can we, can I just ask a question about, um, the rest of public safety?
Yeah.
Or specifically the ambulance revenue piece? Do we, um, do we have, uh, does it show, Marlene, where, what came out of ambulance revenue in the prior year?
For this fiscal year, you're talking about?
No, what I see, yes, for this fiscal-
For this fiscal year, um-
Just because it's hard to know what's happening without knowing-
Right.
What that fifty thousand, sixty-six thousand dollars represents, is represented more or less?
I can get that, I have that in my office.
Okay, just, just to know that maybe that's, maybe that's all new, maybe it's half, I don't know, I don't know. Just it's a significant piece of that revenue.
Sure.
Yeah, you don't need to-
Oh, oh.
Because these guys are going to meet next, yeah.
All right, so I will, I will get that and, and-
Yeah.
I don't remember. So, we pay emergency manag- oh, fire department and emergency management, okay, never mind, okay. Good, Daryl? Yeah, let's go to school.
All right, so, like most of the town departments that have submitted their budgets, they were required, you know, the end of twenty fifteen or the beginning of twenty sixteen. So, when the school department presented their budget in January, um, you know, that, that was a budget requirement by the superintendent and the school committee and, and the sub, uh, the budget subcommittee. Due to some changes in special education, um, changes with a new bus track, uh, contract, partial negotiation with, uh, the teacher's contract, which, which would be the first year of that new contract would be next year, and then years two and three down the road, which we haven't really gotten to yet. Uh, we're pretty comfortable that we can relook at this budget and probably look at lowering it forty to fifty thousand dollars. We haven't sat down and dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's. But due to the things I just mentioned, having changed since January through the middle of March, it looks like our request would be approximately fifty thousand dollars less. Yay, no jumping up and down or clapping or anything, I, you know, geez.
It is good news.
That is good.
We still have to finalize, you know, the budget, but I, since we're here tonight, I, I obviously wanted to give you that, uh, that bit of good news and, and give you, you know, a final number will be coming in the next couple of weeks, but that's where it stands right now.
That would be great, thank you, Brian.
I don't know, Fran or Mike, Mike Poschek's on the subcommittee, the budget subcommittee, and I don't know, Fran talked to the superintendent, I don't know if there's anything else to add, but that's-
I, I would just say I had several conversations with John, his liaison from finance committee, and, uh, he was, uh, willing to bring, uh, the draft budget that you have at this point to the school committee, budget subcommittee-
Yeah.
At their Thursday night meeting, uh, to review with them the kinds of possible adjustments that you've just outlined-
Yeah.
In your comments.
And we have a full school committee meeting Monday night.
The fourth of April.
Yeah, this, yep, so I will be, I'm sure this will be a topic of conversation, because we want to get that wrapped up on our end before we make the final presentation to the selectmen and the finance committee. committee.
Thank you Brian.
Thank the superintendent, don't thank me. Number man.
Thank you to all of you.
Yeah.
We need to drop our budget on the table faster.
Well, you know, it's, I, quite honestly, the, the good news is that the changes were there and the savings were there and, right, we're all in this together, so it wasn't like we're not gonna
I appreciate it.
Yeah, we're, we're not gonna hang on to money that we don't have an expense allocated for, whether, you know, sped students or contracts, so it's the right thing to do and everyone on the school committee and everyone in the administration agrees, so right now that's where it stands, $50,000 less, roughly.
That will make a difference.
Yeah.
Don't worry about it, it's on the sum, it's in the back.
It's what?
The revenues in the back.
Oh, for 16, oh, you're right, you're right, yes. Council on Aging at the bottom of that page, we already addressed that increase. That's for the director. On the next page, the library.
Well, we gave drivers and the assistant the 1.5.
Yes.
All employees are receiving a 1.5 increase. The library's budget represents an increase in additional hours that the library will be open. It's approximately $56, an additional $56 a week.
In addition, if we want to continue to get our library grant, we have to
At least have last year's amount in there.
Right.
It's like snow and ice.
We have to at least have last year's amount or we have to increase it by two and a half to ten?
I thought it was equal.
No, it's gotta be increased every year.
It does have to be increased.
In order to get that grant, state grant, yeah.
Are we okay?
They should be.
Yeah, they
Yeah, okay, right.
From 38 to 40 on the expense.
Yeah. Increased four hours there, okay.
Are you missing something Paul?
Yeah, that's all right.
Is there an extra budget at all there? There's some extra ones.
Our budget's a lot cheaper.
It is.
Recreation, I had, we had a discussion on Friday and I'm considering reducing the expense, the revolving fund, recreation revolving fund is, is obviously self-supporting their, their operations. But I, I need to still reach out to the recreation committee and talk to them about that. I'll get back to you.
But just so we're clear for the people at home, you know, it's not to cut services
Oh, no, no, not at all.
It's, there's another budget that has revenues in it, so
Right, the revolving fund, yes.
So that's why this, right, town budget is looking to be reduced, so.
So and as we've gone through the budget, also highlighted is funds that are coming from water revenue and sewer revenue. Your fixed costs at the bottom of page four, a portion of those monies are funded from water revenue and sewer revenue. And on the next page, we are funding the principal amount for the grit conveyor of $11,000 from free cash. Otherwise, the rest of your principal and interest is funded from taxation. Looking down at the water department and, and the debt.
Is that to pay that off?
Is that to pay off? The grit conveyor debt, I don't think that pays that off, no.
No, we just have 11,000, like 11,200 in free cash and this was just a fit for it.
Yeah.
To pay it off, right?
No, not to pay it off.
No, yeah, that's what I was asking about.
It's not paying it off.
It just happens to be.
We have the 11,000 available.
Okay.
Right.
On, on this sheet of water and sewer that you passed out, you had sewer, and maybe I'm just wrong, but revenues of 330 and on line 93 or whatever, you've got sewer revenue of 321. What am I, am I misreading something?
That's the, that's the budget operations, if you look down in the center of this page you're looking at, direct budget is 321,175.
That's just the budget.
The 330 is estimated revenues.
That's not the, okay, thank you.
Right. And then the indirect costs are 46,012 on the sewer side.
Right.
So yeah, at the top of that page, that's, that's estimated revenues.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Moving to page six, do you have page six? A fill call. That lists all the warrant, annual tell me any warrant articles that require funding. So you have the chapter 90, which, you know, comes from available funds, the town hall renovation, that's a debt exclusion, that would be a borrowing. We have a anticipated water budget deficit and that would come from stabilization.
So that, that's gonna be a tough sell. Just to raise that, I understand why you're using it out of that, but we, as was witnessed here earlier, that, you know, I, I just think we need to be fully prepared if we're gonna go forward, we're taking it out of stabilization, because already we're, we're gonna go to town floor this year and not be able to put back what we took out in December for good reason.
Right.
And, and we can say that next year we'll try to put that money back, but
Well, we said that.
Said that last time.
We know that there will be an increase in, in free cash later this year.
Right, but I, I just
We know expenses are gonna come up too, though. I mean, we know just like this year, unexpected things are gonna happen, so.
Right.
Well, you could technically probably do it this year if you wanted to. What do you mean? Well, that free cash will become available before
Oh yeah, you could do it
15 years.
Meeting next year for sure, so you could do it, I mean, it'll probably be available within four or five months.
September.
So you could theoretically have a fall town meeting and put the, whatever you have available of free cash on that day back into
Back into stabilization, so.
Darrell, were you thinking that, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but we gotta get 60,000 somewhere, right?
I have no idea where the money's coming from. Maybe we, we steal from Wells Fargo, I, I don't but I'm just pointing, I'm just pointing out that that will be a tougher sell on
I understand.
I know part of our conversation when we had it, something that I talked about, I don't want to speak for Jeff or Pat, but it was, because it was a sort of a one-time event, right, you know, to fix something, did you want to borrow for that, did you wanna, you know, it was kinda like
I think we should consider doing a one-time debt exclusion for it.
I mean, money's cheap, but
I mean, it's just
But you know, that's why we're having this, right?
I, I do, I think we should consider, we should have a conversation about that versus taking it out of stabilization at this point. We will have what, taken 60% of stabilization over the course of this one year, really, over the course of the last six, seven months. What's that called? It's not a debt exclusion, I have the wrong term. It's a, when you do it for one
The over?
One time. You're not borrowing, so it's not a debt exclusion, it's a
Not an override, because that stays.
Yeah, it, yeah, well, I mean, tech, it is essentially
Right.
It is, yeah, it is still an override.
Add on to the tax rate
Just for one year and it goes away.
For a specific function and then it goes away. It's not a borrowing, it's a
Yeah, I know, it escapes me. Laura Lee, can you think of it?
But it has to, that has to
Ear mark one.
Be voted at town floor and at the ballot box, right?
Yes, that is correct.
But we're already
If we do that, I need to get that question to the town clerk by April 12th. So we need to have a discussion about that.
I, I think either of the options that Sean is probably more palatable than trying to take it out of stabilization.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, you know, the, the, the water and sewer budgets are so tight that we're not even funding potential water breaks, which we should be, and if the money was available and retained earnings, we would be using that, that's what we should be doing.
Well, it's a reason to keep a stabilization too, because I mean, we don't know, you know, know what water breaks are gonna break next, you know?
But that's why we're saying take it out of stabilization.
Yeah, but, but we just
So
No, listen though, that's why several months ago when we took that 140 out of stabilization, I was opposed because I didn't truly think that was an emergency type situation, I think a water break might be, but we just took 140, now we're, you know, almost down to nothing, really, we're talking 100, 110,000 left in stabilization after this. You know, that's hardly, we've already spent way more than
I'm with you, but
That's a capital
God for the internet.
After Google.
After Google.
I mean, I, I think it's something to consider, given where you are with stabilization. If you had a half million bucks in stabilization or something.
Be a no-brainer, but
It's a must-pay bill.
Yeah.
But to get two-thirds vote might be tough.
Or we figure out a way to put it in the budget, you know, I mean, you gotta, you gotta budget for things and, and so you make tough decisions and you figure out how to get it in there. And luckily we got the good news from the school department, so maybe this just puts us back where we were at the beginning of this meeting.
Right.
It does from a numbers perspective.
I, I think a, a one-time debt exclusion, what did you call it, a capital?
Capital, expenditure exclusion.
There we go. I think that's probably the way to do it.
It'll pass. You know, especially because you have the elderly school office, you're right.
Derek, stabilization, do you recall, because you were actually adding funds that had been approved at the annual town meeting last year for that, do you remember? I have that in my office, do you remember what that was?
There was, I thought you had said that they put 30,000 in last year.
It wasn't an article last year at town meeting, but that had not been posted to the stabilization yet for this.
I don't remember. I'd have to look back.
I'll go put that, I know I have it in my office.
Sean has it.
Sean does.
I haven't already been told. I couldn't find it.
Oh, is this the budget from last year?
I think it is. We had one for public, I don't know. I don't see it.
I don't see it on this. It's your April 20 budget.
I feel like it might have been in an early version, but then we just, they have it at the end. It does sound vaguely familiar.
Okay, so the 351,729 balance prior to the special town meeting was, that, that was prior to the special town meeting, less the 147,715, there's a balance of 204,014. But I still believe there was
We had an article 10 to submit from free cash, a sum of money to the town hall renovation stabilization.
Town hall, okay.
That might have been, while it was being the 30,000. That one I remember, the regular stabilization. Yeah, I don't see one. I actually, I remember there was a discussion at one point about regular stabilization versus town hall stabilization, but I don't see anything else. The water connection, the school. So that is the current figure, the 204.
204.
204, but I'd just like to, yeah, I think we can certainly use that.
Do you, do, do you not think debt exclusion for the $60,000 is worth it?
I, I, I don't.
I have a personal opinion.
That's what I'm asking.
My personal opinion is if we have the money, we should use it to pay that issue and still leave 147, or 140,000, knowing that in four or five months, the free cash is gonna be certified. I don't know, I, I, I mean, that's me, and that's me as a taxpayer, you know, why, why put a debt exclusion, because 60,000 just seems like a low num, you know, like go for something big if you're gonna do something like that.
And there's always the possibility it might not pass.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So what, what does free cash need, is that two-thirds also? As, at, no, majority.
But to take in it, worry about putting it into stabilization, huh?
Two-thirds, two-thirds to go in.
Both free cash and stabilization are both very low numbers, just based on some of the issues we've been dealing with this year. I mean, I get not doing debt exclusion, but that's only because we know that there's a decent chance we're gonna have to do it for some, you know, something else. I mean, and once we spend that 60, it's still likely we're gonna have to spend another 60 later in the year, and then we're gonna do the debt exclusion at a special town meeting.
If you need it, we know we need this.
Yeah.
We don't know what we don't know, what we know, what we don't know.
But we know, we know the trends.
No, you're trying, I, I agree, this is again, this is my personal opinion, it's like, we have this bill in front of us and we have the money to cover it, let's just do it. Versus, that's what, to me, me, Brian, that's what stabilization is all about, those unexpected things that come up, so. But I, you know, I, that's just my own personal opinion.
Well, I don't disagree, I think the problem we get into is, one, what's left in the account, because it is for unexpected things, which is why I believe you should have a strong account, and then two, how it got to be the low number that it is, and I think, you know, for being used for, you know, expenses that might not necessarily be an emergency.
What's the process for getting money back into this account?
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds for that town floor. I mean
And having That's not the difficult part, the difficult part is having the money.
Right, that's, that's really what I mean.
And, and what we're talking about is, is next year, whether you do it in the fall or whenever you decide to do it, it's 200,000 that you're gonna take out of somewhere that we're not gonna buy a new police car, we're not gonna buy a new whatever, you go through the list of things, bands, we're gonna take 200,000 out of our, out of our free cash and we're gonna put it into stabilization. That's a pretty big commitment.
Yeah.
And it's always hard to do.
We were talking about that using a percentage, so you have, you know, for example, free cash and you have a percentage of it that goes directly back into stabilization.
Yeah.
Looking forward, the controller's office is working, controller treasurer's office is working on foreclosure redemption and in the next
Far more aggressively than
Very aggressively, and in the next two years, there will be money falling to that from
Right.
redemption, and a significant amount.
Yeah.
So monies from that could be devoted to stabilization.
Absolutely. And I'm, I'm not one that believes that stabilization needs to be at a million dollars or whatever, but I'd be happy if it got back to the 350 or whatever, I mean, that's, that to me is a pretty decent number, but
Marlene, did you want to share your discussion with the, on the pilot as well? Another, another potential source?
Yeah, percentage of that sort of thing.
Right, when we, I was going to identify that when we looked at local receipts, that was another, well, I had said earlier, I was able to bump up a local well, I had said earlier, I was able to bump up, uh, a local receipt. Uh, we, we met with an example last week, and we're pretty much near the end of negotiating the agreement, uh, and they, we, we asked for more than what they were offering, and they're agreeing to it.
Yeah.
So we were able to, to increase, you know, that, add that to the pilot. So that's twenty-three, it's already forty, there's also a payment we received from Northampton.
Twenty-seven thousand, payment from lieu of taxes.
Yes.
Twenty-seven five.
So forty-five hundred.
Take out the forty-five from Northampton, or whatever that number is, it's four thousand something.
Yeah, okay, twenty-three.
They, uh, originally, they were proposing a two-point-four megawatt, uh, facility. The proposal that I received yesterday from them, based on our discussion last week, they've reduced it to a two-point-three.
Okay.
But they've increased the amount that was on the table before.
Per megawatt.
Yeah.
So there's another potential flow for twenty years that you could.
Just gotta have a plan.
Exactly.
But also, though, again, of course, I mean, we're counting on that money coming, just to, just to maintain our budget, you know? You're always hoping for more money, so that's just gonna fill the holes that already exist, cause the budget's gonna continue to grow up, and we have to keep in mind, we're increasing it two and a half percent every, taxes, two and a half percent every year, just to keep up. You know, so I just think it, it would be wise to decide on what we need to maintain in stabilization for emergencies like the water break, and then when, when those emergencies happen, establish a plan to get that back, or have something set, like every year, a percentage of free cash goes to that account, to at least it gets to this basic level, which I think, hey, I don't love three hundred and fifty, I think four, five, you know, I, I'd love five, but, okay, four, you know, let's take four. Three hundred and fifty actually doesn't sound like that much money to me, really, you know, when you think about it, especially with what things cost a town.
We just haven't been farming long enough.
No, I, I've been farming it.
I've been farming it too long.
It doesn't seem like much money, you know, it goes quick, you know?
It works for the state.
Yeah, I know.
Goes quick.
All right. I agree with you, I, I mean, we, we just need to have, have a plan for how, how that money's going back. Got several options on the table that you can decide.
Well, and, and in fairness, we, at, at the special town meeting, we did, we suggested that we were going to have.
Put it back.
Budget that puts it back. At that time, we, we assumed it would be closing to free cash, which it will be, it's just not happening now.
Not this year.
Issues with D O R and us, and, so I mean, the, the money is not getting spent in some other way, it's still, still out there.
Right.
It is going to come, it's just not going to come in May, so.
Right.
And there's actually nothing, uh, again, if, if we know that it's going to end up in stabilization, great, but, you know, we know that lots of things are gonna come up between now and then, just like they did between our conversation then and now, which is my concern. But it's always gonna be a concern, really.
Yeah.
Shall we continue with the articles?
Yep.
Yep.
All right, so the next item is the sewer inflow infiltration compliance. That is a requirement that we need to meet, uh, that would, forty thousand would fund that from free cash. And we have the development of a sewer master plan, that is a borrowing for a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Is it just me, or is that a lot of money for a master plan?
No, it's what we paid for water. Right, the water master.
I thought it was gonna be metal, yeah.
It was in the same ballpark. Isn't the answer just expand?
Get more users.
That's what we, that's what we need to do, absolutely.
Well, it's more than that, it's an assessment of your, it provides an assessment of your overall system.
Existing, yeah.
Projections on when you're gonna deep replace, you know, there was two.
We have one for.
Technically, where to build out.
Well, in the non-compliance, I mean, those were two things that were identified, is to prepare a master plan for the sewer, as well as the infiltration inflow. So those were two things that were, like, highlighted, that this is what the town needs to get to.
It's a maintenance and master plan, too, they're looking for the long-term, you got your facility up here, how old is it now?
Over thirty.
Thirty years?
I mean, I would think of it under like economic development, uh, you know, you know, you have to, you have to know where it is going.
Exactly.
You have to overlay it out to zoning somehow, I don't understand what needs might be.
Yeah, it's just, and.
I know.
And I think it's good that we're doing it, we need to do it, but at the end of that rainbow, we have more money to spend if we actually.
Not actually a lot of gold that can.
There's no lot of gold, yeah.
I mean, it does help you with the grant submissions.
Yeah, right, well.
To know what you're gonna talk.
You know, you invested that money, and this is where we wanna go with it, and this is what we have to do to get there, so.
I mean.
Where if you're just shooting from the hip, saying, yeah, we're gonna build out Route Five, well, what's the economic effect, you know, what, how is that gonna help you up?
Right, yeah, if it wasn't for that C-DAG grant we got however many years ago, we wouldn't even be over at, on Route Five at all, so. I think that was four hundred and fifty thousand, or I can't remember, it was a lot of money, but whatever.
The North Street Sewer Project, that's for the five hundred feet, correct, Phil?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that's sixty-five thousand, that's a borrowing. Uh, water, water service repairs on Valley and South Street, twenty-five thousand from free cash. The fire department turnout gear replacements, twenty thousand from free cash. The community preservation, that's a fiscal year sixteen adjustment of a hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And community preservation, uh, revenues fiscal year seventeen, one sixty-five. Community preservation is recommending to fund the phase one of the renovations at the Smith Academy Park, a hundred and ninety-four thousand, six thirty-three. And then the fifty thousand dollar borrowing, the last item is the, the difference between the, the total cost for phase one of the renovations in the Academy Park, and that would be a borrowing.
The difference that CPA's not paying?
Correct, correct.
The expectation being we put the money up front, but then get the grants or come back for that same amount.
Yes.
That's what they told me.
And the, um, the fire department turnout gear is.
Twenty.
Completely different from the article.
Yeah, they have a replacement of three suits, I think, in the operating budget.
Different twenty.
Right, it is.
Yes, they bought suits, both in the operating and then a bulk buy.
The next page is our state and, and other charges.
So this eighty-five thousand of comes from the ninety-six, it's appropriated from the ninety-six, it's on the first page.
Yeah.
Yeah. Plus the eleven thousand in the operating budget for the conveyor.
Yeah, and then we project a hundred thousand for free cash that needs to be third cut?
No, it's already sorted, but it's withheld.
And what's that?
A hundred and nine.
Hundred and nine.
Hundred and nine, okay. Okay, so I'm gonna be using a hundred in this year's budget, likely we'll use a hundred in next year's budget, so it doesn't seem like there's gonna be free cash.
We only use it if they're.
Right.
Right.
Well, again, I guess I'm still referencing stabilization.
Yeah, but really, that hundred and nine is from.
Free cash.
Two years ago.
Two years ago, right? Right, I mean, yeah.
You shouldn't use it for operating, but.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm saying, if, in the conversation related to putting some money in stabilization, we know that there's going to continue to be free cash expenses that will probably around a hundred thousand dollars almost any year.
Sure.
I mean, there's, there's always something, so, so I just don't see where any, um, magic stabilization money is realistically gonna come.
Well, this particular hundred and nine, Sean, in this year, is act-, this particular hundred and nine that we're expecting is actually from two years ago.
Right.
We, so we would also get next, last year's, some.
Also get last year's, so that gives us.
Yeah.
It's hundred and nine thousand we would have had this year, if we are, we're not holding on to it.
Right. But, but you're right, as far as free cash and stabilization, but there's always something to spend it on, that's.
Well, there is always something to spend on, but that doesn't mean we always have to spend it.
Right.
I mean, we've basically always used it to purchase capital items for the most part.
One time.
Uh, so in some years, there may be years when you can't purchase any capital items, you know, that's if you
Right.
Wanna choose to do something else with it, that's just what you have to decide.
Yep, and I think we're getting close to one of those years.
We're in that year.
This is one of those years, yeah.
We've hardly bought anything in capital.
Any capital items, so.
Except the grick and beer.
Yeah.
No, that's the loan.
That's no, that's the loan.
That's the loan, so, yeah.
I just have a strong interest in keeping this, this work link going.
Oh, yeah.
Opposed to polluting the.
If it stops working, it.
Yeah, it just doesn't.
Fine, well, we'll be good.
Yeah. All right, what else?
Are there any questions about the state and other charges at twelve hundred and seventy-four, two ninety-eight, as reflected on the front page? The following pages, state receipts. Again, this, these numbers are based on the governor's budget.
It might be a little higher, but not by much.
And the next page, our, our local receipts.
Yeah.
We're still trying to be conservative. Any questions there?
I was back on the veteran's services, being cut when they're going up. That's all right, all right, we gotta pay him.
State receipts, oh.
Right.
Gotta pay it anyway.
Talking about what we pay out in.
Yeah, I was more about.
Than an increase.
So what about it?
So we have a thirty thousand snow and ice deficit this year?
Yes.
Estimated.
I'm sorry, did you flip over, uh?
Better than a hundred and thirty-two we had last year.
No, that's where I'm at.
Yeah, we got to that, but I'm just going back to the snow and ice, yeah, that was the last one. So what was the budget for snow and ice?
Thirty.
For this year, do we have one thirty-nine? Oh, around thirty?
But we always budget thirty thousand, yes, so. Don't we have to increase it a little every year?
I did.
Equal or above.
Equal or above, right.
This year, it's forty-three thousand, eight fifty.
Yeah, we're, we're a hundred and two thousand less than last year in snow and ice.
Right. All right.
And the last page.
Are the funds?
Reflects, right, free, ref-, yes, our funding sources, free cash, Steven, ninety-six thousand total, community preservation revenues, and then the other available funds.
Lots of zeros over there.
What happened to ambulance surplus? Didn't we used to have an ambulance surplus?
The.
We have an ambulance trust.
Yeah. We have the trust. Right, well, cause here you got ambulance revenue and then ambulance surplus.
And obviously surplus is zero.
We're not using any ambulance surplus. Do we have anything in ambulance surplus?
We have, um, um, an ambulance trust and then an ambulance account.
Wasn't Steven doing some revisions with all that? Straging some things out?
Yes, we did.
Yes, with the accountant.
Looking at the ambulance billing.
Yeah.
The ambulance billing, it's not taken care of. That concludes the budget.
Thank you.
Do you wanna meet up?
When do you wanna meet?
Yeah, nice work, Marlene.
So we still have to whittle that number down on the front page, we need to get that to a negative number. Yes, it will, it will.
That was still using seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of school choice money in the budget. That's, our budget includes using seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from school choice, just for the people at home, so.
Darryl, did you wanna, wanna, Brian wanted to make that point, and I think everyone should hear it.
Yeah, that the, the school department budget includes seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly being used from the school choice account, you know, from their revenues that the school department receives.
Which we very much appreciate.
Just, you know, you'll.
And we appreciate how carefully the school handles that money, I know they.
They do a good job.
They do a very good job with that, so. So.
Schedule.
Schedule, so finance committee, Sean and I were just whispering, um, so we're thinking that we'll meet, are you guys okay for Tuesday night?
Is that?
Okay for Tuesday night, we'll do six-thirty, so give us a chance.
I won't be there, but still, go ahead and meet, I'm on vacation, so I can't be there all week.
What?